Can you, can somebody close that door if you don't mind? All right, good evening everyone and welcome to Wareham zoning board appeal for tonight's meeting Wednesday, December 8, 2021. It is 6:30 PM and we are at room 320 at the multi-service center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. I want to call the meeting to order. I make a roll call. My far right associate member, Mr. Chris Conti, permanent member, Mrs. Veronica Devenez, our clerk, Jim Akabachi, and I want to welcome a new associate member, Mr. Tory Larson. Welcome.
Thank you.
And a regular member, Mr. Richard Sample, myself, the chair, Nazir Al Qalasi also present, our town planner, Mr. Ken Buckland, his associate, Aaron Shaheen, and also independent consulting PE, Mr. Charles Robley. I'm gonna start, and also just came in, regular member Jake Morrison. On the preliminary business, 15-20, David and Cynthia Garnett. They're here? You want to come here quick, please? All right, it's gonna be a long night tonight. Let's get to the point. We don't want to like drag things and hear how we don't pay taxes on Mars and we pay here. So let's get to the point, make sure to answer them quick.
Okay.
All right, name and address for the record.
David and Cynthia Garnett, 23 Fishman's Cove Road.
Your name, sir?
David Garnett.
All right, what are you here for?
An variance on the, extending our room out from the porch.
Well, modification of that variance.
Right, modification.
Modification on what?
On our project for the porch and extended room.
We had a prior project to install a farmer's porch and extend a room. We were asking for a minor modification to extend the room out two more feet in order to meet up with the, with the farmer's porch.
Okay. Let me get, do you recall when you get the, the previous approval, was it the variance or special permit?
Special permit, I believe.
All right, and when you, and what happened now?
So when we started to do the project, we noticed that the room that we were extending out did not meet up with the front of the farmer's porch. So we're just asking to bring the room out 24 more inches in order to meet the front of the farmer's porch.
So the eight feet, it used to be six, you want eight feet?
I believe it's.
Eight, we want to make it to 10, to meet the porch.
Are you talking about the front porch or the back?
No, the front.
The front.
So the eight by 13, what's the eight by 13?
Right, it's the eight by 13. We want to make that 10 by 13.
10 by 13.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And you are on, where is that? You in R15? That's a R15. So originally, you needed a variance to put this house, that wasn't existing a long time ago?
Yes.
Yes.
And you came for, you must have came for a grant.
A special permit, back in July of 2020.
We granted everything they see here back in July, and they're asking to extend what we granted back.
Put that thing on. All right, let's do a quick, Veronica, what do you think? You okay, Jimmy?
Good.
Rich?
I'm fine with it.
Jake?
Okay.
Make a motion to close the meeting.
All right, motion to close by Jim. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Oppose, abstain. All right.
Make a motion to grant relief, ask you questions.
By, as a minor modification. Okay, do I have a second on Jim's motion?
Aye, second.
Second by Rich. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, the carries. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Can I have those papers sent?
You're not 10.
Well, my microphone's on.
Just get it closer, as much.
How's that?
All right, 15-21, Mannix, reconsideration, special permit, variance, site plan review, 238 Sandwich Road. All right, I'm gonna allow 25 minutes for that hearing. That's, as you notice, we have 12 of them, so 25 minutes. And it's 6:35 now, just wanna start.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Jillian Morton, 184 Main Street. So we're here and it's under preliminary business. My understanding is that it's for reconsideration to open the hearing, and that, that would be voted on to, to open it back up. We've submitted plans, our engineer's here, and we also have some supplemental information. So I think that would be the first step, would be to, to open up the, the hearing officially because it kind of ended with a question to the town council.
Okay. All right. We gotta reopen it from scratch, right? Not from scratch, reopen the, the decision or reconsider, right? Correct?
Yes, yeah. So there was a motion on the floor to approve, and it did not have majority.
All right, we reconsider. So, so I guess we gotta go back to, Jake, did you review the minutes?
Yes.
And you comfortable to sit back on it?
Yes.
All right, so we got Jake back on. All right, name and address.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I say something? I said on the original vote, and so if it's being reconsidered, I think I should be back on the board to, for the reconsideration vote.
You know what, I can't answer that.
The town council was, was notified about this. There was a question about Robert's rules of order. Town council's response was, this board does not adhere to, and is not bound by Robert's rules of order. And it is within this board's right to reconsider this petition as we voted for it. That's, the board, the town council said it's, it's up to the board.
To reconsider, which we did.
But he didn't mention anything on which members should be put back on the reconsideration.
Right, but Jake had missed only one on the Demulla rule, he could go back in.
As long as he provided a written, written statement, from what I understand.
For who?
The Demulla rule states that you have to provide a written statement saying you reviewed.
Okay. Why don't we table this, have him write a written statement? You willing to put a written statement?
Yes, I can do that.
Okay, we're gonna have to table you until he writes a statement that he reviewed it.
Okay, but is, was there a vote that the meeting is reopened? I think that might.
Yeah, well, I guess it was reopened last time.
Okay, at the very end.
We get the simple majority last time.
So we'll be under continued public hearings?
Right.
For the next meeting?
I don't know if you actually are under continued public hearing, though. You have 90 days since the close of the hearing to make a decision, and you're going on the basis of the information they had before you. If you want to include new information, you want to reopen the hearing.
Okay.
I make a motion to reopen this hearing.
Okay.
Aye, second.
Second by Richard. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye? Jake?
Aye.
Okay, it's open. Yes, sir.
I just ask a technical question.
Yeah.
At the last meeting where you did make your decision, you closed the hearing, did you not?
We closed the vote, yes.
If there were people here who were parties to notice, and they went out of the room assuming that this hearing was closed, don't they have the right to get notice?
Well, we rescinded our vote. I understand what you're saying, but the same night we.
But you voted to close the hearing.
Right, and we made a motion to resend our vote, and we did. So we reopen it now. So you're saying we have to send notices again?
My question was, if somebody went out of here with the assumption that the hearing was closed, don't they get due notice again, if you're gonna open it up?
To be honest with you, it's too complicated for me, unless somebody have a solid answer.
I think if you review the, if you review the video, I recall, my memory is that at the time, it was clear as mud. So we made the statement to the room that we'd be hearing this again, and anybody that wanted or had any say should return this evening.
Right, but I think Charlie's saying technical.
I think if you look at the tape, you'll see that that happened.
If that was the case, fine. I'm just asking the question.
But you're talking about technical, I mean, rules. It has to be re-notice because it was closed and reconsidered?
It's always been my understanding that once a hearing is closed, you cannot take any more information.
I understand, but if we resend our vote, we can. Town council said we can.
Well, I thought you voted to close the hearing, and then you debated whether or not you'd approve the project, and you voted to deny the project, as I remember it.
Right, and we also, somebody made a motion to resend the vote.
You actually didn't vote to deny the project, you voted to approve the project, and it failed because it did not have the proper number of votes.
Right.
Correct. And then we made a motion to resend our vote.
That's right.
Okay.
No.
That's fine, I'm fine.
What, what do you, what do you guys want to, what do you want to know? What do you want to do? I don't want the burden on me.
A question. Was there determination that it was just a simple majority to decide to open that?
Reopen, yes. It's a simple majority. The town council agreed to this. So if you think there's a technicality in reopening, let me know before we start. Anybody?
I, I got one more comment, too, that I'd like to make. I did review the tape online, and actually, the part of the vote was missing from the recording.
The part that's what?
The part of the vote where we voted on the petition was not included in the recording. It was missing. The part was there for the recent vote, but the part where we voted was not there. I watched it.
That was denied?
Yes, I talked to, I talked to Bob a little bit, and he said that there was, they ran out of space, and it didn't flip over to the chip or something, but it was on a DVD, so I want to make sure.
But no one arguing it was denied, so unless somebody wants to appeal. I mean, no one's arguing.
And that would come up in, I'm sorry, interrupt, Mr. Chairman, that would come up in the administrative record anyways.
Right. So what's, what do you think, counsel? What should we do?
I propose that we reopen for the next hearing.
Reopen and continue next hearing?
Yes.
All right, let's do that. Okay, we are reopened, so let's continue from.
Excellent.
You looking for a continuance?
No, Mr. Mannix has some information I think he wants to.
All right, let's share it.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The last time we were here, some, some, I think the reason we're back here, there was some questions asked about a, a generator, a sidewalk.
Right.
And the, the ability for the garage to hold vehicles. So I think my civil engineer, J.C. Engineering is here, we, we answered those questions, we put them in the new, the new drawing. Just a couple of simple changes, we made them. We relocated the generator. We showed the sidewalk. To answer the question on, on the six copies?
Six.
To kind of help explain my, my explanation, the last hearing about the ability for a car to go in the garage, I, I took the liberty of taking a, pictures of a garage in Waldham for Mass General Hospital, that's the same garage that we're building, the same floor-to-floor height, and it clearly shows that cars can fit in there. I know there was a question about that, and so I just wanted to give, this is just informative, hasn't changed anything, just shows you that it can be done. And I think at the, at the hearing, I mentioned pre-stress concrete because there was some misunderstanding by Mr. Rowley about the beams and stuff like that. You can see on the pictures, we don't have beams there. Pre-cast concrete is a thin slab construction, and there's plenty of room for cars and vehicles. And the miscellaneous equipment that Mr. Rowley was talking about, the pipes and sprinkler system fit quite well. So I just thought that would be for information only. We didn't change anything. It's not even this building, it's just a similar building. That's it.
I would say, Mr. Chairman, there were, what date was that submitted, Brian?
This plan is dated December 2nd, it was submitted on December 3rd.
Okay, so we have those plans. You know, if there's further peer review that's, that's being done, we'd ask that to be done. But at this point, I think we've, we've gone back and forth and tried to address everything. So that's pretty comprehensive at that point. You should have those in your file because those were submitted, like Brian said.
Didn't give the other two to the other two guys. I already gave you two others.
All right, let's start. I did look at the plans, how you put the parking, I mean, how you did the, the generator sidewalk. Chris, did you look, had a chance to look at them?
I did, I looked at them online, yes, I did. Didn't reduce the mass of it, though, that was my complaint of the whole building, where it doesn't fit into the neighborhood. It's still a massive building that sticks up, and it's gonna stick right up in that whole neighborhood. The four neighbors and stuff that live there are gonna have to look at that big massive building.
All right, Veronica?
I reviewed, I saw the plans online.
Okay, you're the one who wanted to sidewalk it. I know, against the project, does that look all right to you?
I still haven't changed my mind about the project.
Okay. Jimmy?
I'm good. I saw the plans. They were, they were emailed out, I was able to review.
All right. Jake? I did review the plans. I'm okay.
Richard?
Yep, I'm all set. I did review them.
All right, let's go. Mr. Rowley, technical things. Did you have a chance to look at them?
I have nothing more to, to say on it at this point because I wasn't sure at the time that those plans were put online. Hearing hadn't been opened, as far as I was concerned, the hearing had been closed. So I have nothing to report to you.
All right. What's the deadline for this hearing?
Tonight? It's, it's been extended quite, quite some time. I'd have to look back on the particulars of the extension. You know, it gets to a point of, to of due process, you know, and we understand different positions on the board regarding the size. I think we've had extensive memorandums regarding, you know, the, where this is, the size by right. We've gone through the variance and you have looked at that. At this point, we provided the information necessary. So I, you know, like I said, it's a due process thing for the applicant as well to be able, this is regarding zoning. A lot of the concerns that we're regarding building code. And we've, we've talked about that, that that's a separate jurisdiction, and case law supports that.
Mr. Chairman, you have 60 days from the close of the public hearing to make a decision.
And how long, and was it 90 days to, since the, from the, the opening of the hearing? 90?
65 days to open the hearing.
65?
You opened the hearing all right. You, you have the.
How long we can drag it?
You can drag the, the public hearing as long as the applicant continues the process as well.
There is no deadline on when we close the hearing.
No, not, if you get continual agreement with.
What happened if we don't? What's a special permit? 90 days, isn't it, or 100?
90 days.
From the date of the application, or the opening?
No, from the close of the hearing.
No, no.
Is there an impact on that, where it was closed and reopened?
No.
I think you're still, you're still within the 60 or 90 days of the, of the first close of the hearing as well.
Of the first close, or of the, the request for the hearing?
The first close. It's based on when the close of the hearing occurs.
Because we closed at the last hearing, so then that would extend another 60 days, you're saying, since we reopened it?
You have, you have 60 days from that time, under the old hearing. You have 60 days from when you close this hearing.
But it's 90 days from the application for a special permit to render a decision. We cannot open, drag it more than 90 days from the application. Special, 100 days, variance 90, right?
Variance is 100 days, that's right.
Okay, so special permit is 90 days from the date of the application, which is, what's the application date?
Application date was October 13th.
Okay, so we have time. 13, not really.
Yeah, this says site plan review is 60 days from the, from the hearing of a special permit close, so.
For, for a site plan review?
Yeah.
That's right. That's where the 60 days comes from, the site plan review.
Okay, so when that was closed, got it.
Why don't we continue one more time? Sorry. I, I recommend this. I don't know how the board feels about it.
Are you looking to have Charlie look at the revised plans? Then it seems, if, if Charlie's gonna look at the plans, is there enough money left in his account, in the account to pay him?
Through the chair, yes. We've refunded the account, oh, a month ago.
You want?
I believe we refunded the account, but if I, if I just may, Mr. Chairman, the, the two, the only two things that were changed, I believe, on the drawing from, from the previous review, is the generator location, which I think Mr. Rowley asked that we could move it, and at the time, I wasn't sure, but we moved it. And the other thing was, Mr. Devenez, she asked about the sidewalk, which we, we did put in, you know, in, in the plan. So I don't think there was, there's not an extensive review necessary, and quite frankly, it could probably be looked at very quickly, because we, we basically did what we were asked to do. We didn't change the plan, and the only thing I brought in tonight was to show you, I think the question came up, was a hard question to answer, and I figured this would be the answer. Cars will fit into that nine-foot floor-to-floor that Mr. Rowley was concerned about, and it shows quite plainly. That building exists, it's not a, it's not a plan, it's, it's there. And I drove in today.
Building code matter, we're not gonna get into this. Is anyone in the public want to speak in favor or against this project? I hear none. What's the wishes, the board? Anybody can, anything, you can make any motion.
Well, I'd like to know if anybody on the board feels it's necessary to continue.
I, I would err on the side of continuation. If Mr. Rowley said he didn't have enough time, I'd appreciate, I'd give him appreciation to the fact that, to give him the time, so he could.
Um, yeah, I kind of agree with Rick.
Okay, that's your answer. And I'm sure Veronica would agree with the same, don't you? Or you just want to deny it tonight?
No, because I, I don't know that Mr. Rowley's gonna have any more to add. There are only two changes with the generator and the sidewalks.
So do you want to close it tonight, make a decision?
Do we ask Mr. Rowley?
What you wishes?
I would prefer to just move forward with it, but it's up to.
We got, we don't need a super majority to close it. So if we got three people willing to close it.
But we cannot argue with answers. If we close it, we cannot take any input next time from Mr. Rowley.
I understand that.
So if we want to close them, I as well make a decision.
That's, I believe that's Veronica's point. You'd rather just make a vote right now, let's find out where we are.
I know my opinion's not gonna change, and I don't, I.
I'm open to any motion. You're the board. Every, somebody makes a motion, whatever you wish, motion to continue.
Make a motion, we close this hearing.
Okay, I have a motion to close by Mr., by Jim Kabachi. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jake. All in favor to close public hearing, 55-21 Mannix, 238 Sandwich Road. All in favor, say aye to close.
Aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, closed. Okay, wishes.
I make a motion to approve the plans as presented.
If I may, we have 60 days to render a decision if you don't want that, but you can also make a decision. I mean, a motion, go ahead.
Vote it down.
Right.
Just, just find out where we stand. Make an emotion to approve the, the plan as presented, as revised, as a site plan review.
All right, any discussion on the motion? Okay, no discussion. I would like to add that this, this plan, I would like to put a condition that it's strictly for a, what kind of care is it?
Mr. Chairman, it's an intermediate care.
Intermediate.
Not using the term assisted living, we're using.
It's an intermediate care.
It's a, it's a strictly approved for intermediate care and nothing else. So, counsel, you gotta draft it, we have to review it if it goes through.
Right.
So it's, then any other changes, we definitely have to come back to zoning. Okay, that's the motion by Mr. Kabachi. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Richard. All in favor, say aye.
Can I have a little discussion about that, chapter 23D, like I said before? Who's voting on this?
Jake.
Jake? So he hasn't provided a written statement, so I think we're gonna be open for.
I got it right here, so.
Thought it had to be filed with the clerk, but I'm not sure about that.
I mean, we could file it with the clerk.
Whatever, whatever. I, I guess, you know, you rescind the vote because they didn't get their, their way on how they wanted the vote to turn out, and that caused, then you can put somebody else on the board that maybe has a favorable vote. I think, I think the whole procedure is all wrong, myself, and I think it's open for, very much for an appeal in the land court. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
I, I, I do agree that I think once the board makes a decision.
We.
It's a decision, but I understand.
And agrees that he can appeal.
We did ask counsel, and counsel said we could resend our vote. Otherwise, we wouldn't have. We wouldn't be adhering it. And I don't make the rules, believe me. And Mr. Morrison is a permanent member, he has the right to sit on it, miss in one hearing. If you have, I don't know what to say. I, I know how you feel about it, and this.
I, I just want to say one more thing. I, I attended a class last night, I don't know if you took that class, and I specifically asked about, you know, if a site plan review permit vote does not pass, that needs a two-thirds vote, a super majority. What is it, does it take a, just a majority to resend the vote? And they said absolutely not, but that wasn't our town attorney.
I totally understand, but counsel said.
I believe they said no. They didn't say absolutely not when I read it. I think the answer was no.
It was no.
Thank you.
Right, and, and, and counsel said we could resend the vote with simple majority.
He left it up to the decision of the board.
I don't know what to say.
I, I'm just telling, I'm just saying, that's all, that's my comments on this.
I, I totally understand, I know how you feel about it, and if there's, it's open for appeals, I guess.
I'm sure it will be.
Yeah. All right, so motion second, I have a second for Jim's motion.
I thought I seconded already.
Second by Richard. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Opposed by Veronica, abstain, opposed. So it's 4, 1, 0. I guess it carries. And that goes for the variance, for the, for the, for the solarium and the shed. Remember we said, we already voted on, but we reiterate the vote right now. All right, good luck, let's see how it goes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Two and a half years later. All right, continue public hearing. 56-21, Dubey, for special permit. All right, continue public hearing, uh, fifty-six dash twenty-one, do be for special permit. For what?
For, for...
Let's see how it goes.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, huh? Wait. What, I missed that, we already answered. Well, you, there's twenty days, if you wanna go talk to town council, beat it up, it doesn't really matter to me, so, one way or another, so, I don't know what to say. Probably it's not bad idea to go talk to council, get educated at least about it.
Curious about the majority and some majority that's...
Right, so maybe you should, and if there's, it's a, if it's a defict, a defective decision, it's defective. All right, uh, fifty-six dash twenty-one, do be special permit, still open, name and address for the racket, and let's hear it.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Phil Mackey, Mackey and Mackey, twelve fifty-six Washington Street, Norwood, Massachusetts, Councilman for, and on behalf of the applicant, with me are Erica and Justin Kennedy, the principals of the applicant, and I'll let them introduce themselves.
Hi, how are you? I'm Erica Kennedy, my address, so, one thirty-four Sandwich Road in Wareham.
Good afternoon, my name is Justin Kennedy, one thirty-four Sandwich Road also, in Wareham, Mass.
All right, uh, last time we heard, I guess we needed that letter, and this one, uh, this one, Chris, you're sitting on this one, the reason on this one, because when we opened it, the Mullen Rule, who opens the hearing stays with it, so you have, you staying on that one, unless you don't wanna.
That, that's fine.
Okay, because, uh, it's not a, it's not already open, at the opening, who open, who's, who opens stays.
Who's ever present when it's open?
All right, so, uh, I guess last time, who wanted to hear this letter, see this letter? That is a special permit, where did we leave it last time?
Basically, where we left it last time is, the original application was for a site plan approval and a special permit. Looking at the actual site plan triggers, we don't actually meet the requirements or the mandatory, um, thresholds for site plan, and per your guidance, we went back and discussed this with the building inspector, um, because if he had decided that, no, we still needed a site plan, we owed you a considerable more amount of information. Conversely, if he decided we did not need a site plan, then we've pretty much presented everything, though I'm happy to go over our presentation again if people don't remember, um, for the special permit.
And that was simply because it's under ten parking spaces?
Correct.
Okay, guys get that? Under ten parking spaces, don't need a site plan view. So we'll take some questions, uh, like, like, like every other establishment on those marijuana, is this the manufacturer or the delivery one?
This one is actually the, let's see, the delivery on Recovery Road. So to refresh your memory, uh, we basically have a lease with the town of Wareham, because the town owns the building, um, specifically for the purpose of operating a delivery, um, operation from there. It is delivery only, um, I think, uh, Mr. Kabachi, uh, brought up a good point, that only the state could come up with something so convoluted, but that's all we're allowed to do there by our agreements with the Board of Selectmen from Wareham. And so respectfully, that's all that's going to happen there. We don't trigger the ten parking spaces, uh, because we're probably going to have at most onsite three employees, there will be some delivery drivers, and we'd like to keep three vehicles there overnight, so if you add all that up by the zoning by lot, comes to nine. To refresh your memory, there are no customers or public allowed, so this is not a use that's really generating a significant amount of traffic, and I think it was also brought up last hearing, um, you probably can put an entire day's worth of delivery of this product into a vehicle at once, and send them out in the morning and have them come back whenever we're closing business. So it's not even like the delivery vehicles are gonna be constantly going in and out, say, for a normal grocery operation where you can only put so much in, in at a time. So, there's no signage, or no significant signage proposed, there really won't be any changes to the, there'll be no changes to the exterior structurally, cosmetically, the place will be, um, reconditioned and improved, um, but again, that's all cosmetic. Uh, we think it'll be an attractive building at the effectively entrance, or at least one of the entrances to the business park, um, and I think we can operate there with absolutely no impact to our neighbors. That's kinda part and parcel of what we went through last time.
Uh, you, you have your hosting agreement, right?
We do.
We do.
Do we have the paperwork on this?
So, so, when did this, not that it matters, but when did the state approve the delivery? It's been, it's been a while?
I'll turn it over to the experts.
Absolutely, um, the state, um, started taking public comments and things of that nature regarding the delivery, um, last summer, and they voted on it of November of last year.
All right, just a curiosity question, why the dispensaries don't do deliveries? They can't?
Everything is a separate license, so just because you got your dispensary doesn't automatically give you permission to do anything else.
So I guess that's flatten the pie.
It's, it certainly seems that way.
It's certainly like a liquor license, you can get a license to pour liquor, but you gotta have a separate license to put it in your car and take it to a party. Need another license to sell it, to put it in a bag and take it home. Everything you do, you have to have a license for it.
Yeah, uh, well, I guess, and it's all regulated by the state, I mean, there's not much we could do with the regulation.
Are we gonna get the files on this?
We, you wanted to...
This is Ten Littlebrook.
Huh?
This is not Recovery Road, um, we're talking about Recovery Road right now, this is the next one.
If you don't have a paper copy, I can give you another one.
It's Littlebrook, I mean, uh...
Chris, do you have a question on that?
No, I'm all set with this.
Veronica, what do you think?
I, I don't want any...
If I remember last time, it was fine, it was just, it was a question on how frequently they were going back and forth. Was it?
Jimmy?
I'm good.
Rich?
I'm good, sir. I have extras.
Sorry, any question?
Nope.
Jake?
We've got it.
We got it right here if you want it. Recovery.
Yep, that's it.
It's just two different, two different files, it's two different progresses.
All right, anyone in the public wanna speak in favor or against this project? All right, if I hear none, let's move to close.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion to close by Jim, fifty-six dash twenty-one, do I have a second? Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. Uh, now wishes.
Um, I make a motion to grant the special permit.
Okay, and, uh, just a finding, not detrimental to neighbors?
Not detrimental.
All right, I have a motion to grant any discussion on that motion.
There's, there's a decision that's been filed this afternoon, that's, it was included in the file, that includes findings on the, uh, special permit.
Yeah, I saw that. We saw, we, we'll sign it.
All right.
I saw that, I read them.
It has findings that go beyond the...
Okay. All right, uh, so we have that motion, uh, do I have, who's second? Jake, Jake can second, someone else, he wasn't on that.
Jake's not on this, it's gonna be...
I second.
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, so this one carries.
Which one are we on?
Four Recovery.
Four Recovery?
Yeah.
Okay.
You got it.
No, no, I'm talking, I thought...
All right, okay, so, let's, Veronica, stay right here.
No, we just did four Recovery.
Four Recovery.
She had the, she had the bucks for one. It's a problem when they're so similar.
So, Richard, and this, not Jake. All right, uh, second one, fifty-seven dash twenty-one, continue public hearing, also do be special permit and site plan review, Ten Littlebrook Road, on the marijuana establishment.
And this was the same set of circumstances, Mr. Chairman?
Name and address for the racket again, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Phil Mackey, Mackey and Mackey, twelve fifty-six Washington Street, Norwood, Massachusetts, is Councilman for, and on behalf of the applicant.
Erica Kennedy, one thirty-four Sandwich Road, Wareham.
Justin Kennedy, one thirty-four Sandwich Road, Wareham.
Okay, so where'd we leave this one last time?
The same place, and I believe you have a new letter from the building commissioner as well. Uh, in this particular case, we only need seven spots, because there are no overnight, um, delivery vehicles being left onsite, and to remind the board, this is cultivation and manufacturing only, um, and at least at this point, we don't have a license to transport our own product from one site to the other, so a third party will be engaged for that, um, because we need another license from the state, and that's a process which we hope to get, but we're not at that, that point right now, um, so we will adhere to the letter of the law. Effectively, this, this, uh, site is also closed to the public, there's no onsite sales, there's no, uh, pretty much any interaction with anything other than, um, the employees and, and the Kennedys, who I believe will be working onsite.
Okay, so, again, fencing, security?
All of it.
All these things will be inspected, but we have nothing to do with that, that's state regulator, right?
Yes.
All right. All right, Chris?
I'm all set, thanks.
Veronica?
I don't have any questions right now.
Sorry, any question?
Nope.
Richard?
I'm all set, sir.
Jake? Sir, uh, Jimmy?
It's a carbon copy of the other one we have, we just did.
Right, anyone in the public wanna speak against or in favor this project? I hear none, let's move to close.
So moved.
I have a second?
I second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. Motion's.
Motion to approve.
Okay, with the standard condition, okay, and I have a second on Jim's, uh, motion.
I second.
Second by Chris, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, five zero zero, carries, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Let's move to the public hearing, two, two dash twenty-one, Settlers Glen, get off, Council Bobrowski, and that's three one two eight Cranberry Highway. Okay. All right, is Settlers Glen here?
Yes, we're...
Ah, okay.
All the way down. Business. I don't understand, that's the second one.
Oh, Matt, was the only thing they had news on. Why not?
Oh, well, you're signing another one?
No, you're good. Ken, is, is there a, uh, revised?
Thank you.
Thank you. So, you need me a couple times, this is the one we just did, right? And what are we gonna do with, man, you guys are gonna write something out on the line?
You want, is it easy to be on the side, on the end?
Yeah.
Why don't you just sit on the end? I'll sit in the middle, I don't mind.
Let's have, so... Why Jillian got a...
No, no, it's a nomination for patients.
All right. All right, who's got that hearing, what are they doing?
What are we on? Settlers Glen, two twenty-one.
Is Attorney Bobrowski here?
Mr. Chairman, it's a pleasure to see you.
Oh, you know, I didn't know, I didn't know you were the crutches and, uh, what happened?
I was on the phone with the Sharon zoning committee, switching over to Zoom, and I wasn't paying attention as I held my laptop, my phone, and a sandwich, I missed the last step, and I have a, a ruptured, um, quadricep tendon that is now gonna be necessitated surgery, so...
Wow, well, I hope you feel...
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Hope you, I hope you feel better. All right, uh, let's...
Mr. Chairman, I don't think there's anything left for me, so I will say goodbye.
No, we got, thank you, thank you, Charlie.
Are we reopening this, or this is already open?
Brandon, open it.
Stay and hang out, Charlie.
Brandon?
Gonna be read in.
Oop, oop, I got it. I got you.
I'll just leave him there, he'll fall again.
Hold on.
Thank you, okay.
This needs to be read in?
Yeah.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on December eighth, two thousand twenty-one, at six thirty PM, to consider a substantial change to petition two dash twenty-one, a comprehensive permit under Mass. General Law Chapter forty B, represented by Mark Bobrowski, a squier, to change tenure from ownership to rental for twenty units of affordable ownership homes located at Settlers Glen, three one two eight B Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. That appears on assessors map eight, lot one oh oh seven C, in the MR thirty slash strip commercial zones.
All right, very well, name and addresses for the racket, and let's hear it.
Good evening, Mark Bobrowski, my office is in Concord, Massachusetts, and I'm the legal counsel to Settlers Glen. Sitting next to me is Cheryl Nichols, I don't know your address, so you might add that.
Number three eighty-five Court Street in Plymouth.
And Jim O'Brien is one of the principals in Settlers Glen.
Okay, all right, very well, so let's hear, what's the deal?
Mr. Chairman, um, as we discussed, uh, by Zoom the last time, this is a, kind of a reverse on, uh, change of tenure. Normally, what the developer wants to do is to take a rental project and make it into for sale, I'm sorry, the other way around, a for-sale project, uh, a rental project and make it for sale, because the developer wants to get out of the deal and go home. The typical attitude of the municipality is no way. You told us that you were gonna do a rental, that's a hundred percent of the units counting on the SHI, uh, so for that reason, it's very difficult to do for the developer, convert a condo project, for example, into a, or a rental project into a, the other way. So what we have tonight is the opposite, uh, this is a for-sale, uh, a rental project that wants to be, instead of a for-sale project as approved by this board, and, uh, that would mean that you would count twenty units instead of five. Uh, I think that it's, at that point in time, there's very little land use difference between a rental and a for-sale project. The income levels are gonna be the same whether it's rental or for sale, the affordable count will be the same whether it's affordable or for sale, and the bottom line is that, we think that this may focus on your fear that the for-sale project would be, uh, better managed than a rental project. So Cheryl Nichols is the management agent for this project, and I asked her to come tonight to give you an idea of how their company would manage this to make it a, an asset for the community.
Thank you, guys. Um, so what I really wanna just say is, I think maybe some of the concern is that because it is a small property, the concern would be how well is it gonna be managed? And I think what I can say for you there is that, uh, twenty-unit property is going to be actually overseen by a professional management company, it's not a developer who wants to self-manage, they've actually hired a professional management company. I've been in affordable housing for thirty years, I actually was involved with the village at eight fifteen Main Street through SC Management when it was first built, and I stayed with that company till I opened my own company in two thousand and sixteen. Um, and I know there was some concern about that property when it came online, but it's And I think what I can say for you there is that 20-unit property is going to be actually overseen by a professional management company, it's not a developer who wants to self-manage, they've actually hired a professional management company. I've been in affordable housing for 30 years. I actually was involved with the village at 815 Main Street through SC Management when it was first built, and I stayed with that company till I opened my own company in 2016. And I know there was some concern about that property when it came online, but it's been very well managed, and I believe it continues to be well managed, although not by my company. And I think here, what we want to look at is the fact that we will be a physical presence on the property, because the fear has to, kind of comes in when there's not good tenant selection, and when there's not good oversight. So we will have a very thorough tenant selection plan that will be vetted out by DHCD and approved by, I would assume, the town as well. And we would have a designated manager and a designated maintenance person who would be a physical presence on that property on a regular basis, but not as a larger company that has a management office, so the residents kind of know, oh, they're here, you know, Monday through Friday from 9 to 5. In this particular case, it's one of those deals where the manager will be coming randomly, different times, always specifically by contract, a certain number of hours every single week, but people will never know when that might be. And that will be by both the maintenance staff and the manager. And I think that there, there's a lot more of these smaller rentals that are coming along, and I actually, my company, we do several of them, and they're very successful.
So think of a typical scenario where you might drive by this development and see something that you don't like. The lawn hasn't been cut.
What trash left out.
Or trash left out. I mean, that's gonna happen when there's a homeownership product here. You can't make Jim go out and mow his lawn if he owns the lawn. So in this case, the rental management company would be mowing the lawn on a regular basis. The trash would be picked up, the garbage would be picked up, and you know it's gonna happen, because they're under contract with Mr. O'Brien and his, and his crew. I think it's actually equally as good a deal as it would be for homeownership. We understand that you might want to have homeownership opportunities at that location, but the rental, as I said, is equally desirable. There's some people that want to come down here and rent, and I think it's an equal split in that regard. Jim, do you want to throw something in?
Yes, I think one of the reasons why we'd like to do this too, is we've seen a lot of rental product that is simply apartment buildings, they have elevators, 8, 900 square feet. These units are homes, there's people that need them temporarily for building a house or other uses within the community. So it's not the typical rental product either, and we think that's important. We've kept the design that you've approved, the size, the one-car garage, they have full basement, so they're pretty good units, if you will.
The rental units, I'm sorry, the rental units that are affordable would have to be year-round leases, just to make that clear. That's part of DHCD's requirement for 40B.
All right, well, I thought, yeah, let me...
You said the rental units that are affordable?
Yes.
100%, all 20 count is affordable?
No, five of them are affordable of the 20.
Whether they're rented or whether they're sold?
Whether they're rented or whether they're sold. The difference is that when they're rented...
Did I mislisten, did you say that it was gonna be 100%?
That's your count on the SHI, the subsidized housing inventory.
So we can count them as affordable, but you can rent them as unaffordable?
Well, that's, that's the way it's always been on rental projects, the state...
I just wanted to know, I just wanted to be, I wanted...
Well, I'll say, if you sell... Is somebody talking? If you, be quiet please, because it echoes. If you sell them, 25% goes towards our 10%. If you rent them, the whole project, but they have, they only have to rent 25%.
They can still, 75% is still market rate.
Correct.
Yes, yes. All right, well, I, I'm, I know how it works, and I know exactly what you're saying, and I know if it goes to housing, that's the end of it, but I'm sure there's a lot of neighbors who does not like rental versus sales or homeowners. We'll hear from them, see what's concerns. Before we do so, let's start by Chris, what do you have for comments?
When we originally approved it, I did kind of like the idea that they were gonna be owned, and I do like the idea too also, that we're gonna get, you know, counting all 20 units now instead of just five of the units. But I guess I would like to hear from the neighbors and the public on what their opinions are.
All right, Veronica?
I like the idea that they were gonna be owned, I just think that they're better taken care of, and it changes the, I think, the value in that area to have these rental instead of having homeownership. I think there's a pride of homeownership, and I think we're gonna lose that if these are rental units.
Yeah, Jimmy?
I've got some questions, I heard some scuttlebutt, I don't know. When I hear things, I like to confirm them or have them denied. So what I heard is that people that bought this project from the original developer are in fact the same people that are developing across the street 150 units, is that true or false?
That's false, and I'm here with Ivo Cole, and his family owns Cole and Cicetti Public Justice. We purchased the property from David Grossman, who was the manager of the last LLC. You just happen to remember me, because I'm the one that permitted the Dakota property in 2018.
No, it wasn't by my memory, it was by word on the street.
Sure, sure.
That's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, I think that's the relationship, is that...
I didn't recognize you with your mask on.
Okay, good, good to hear. I'm trying to stay incognito. So the Dakota property was permitted in 2018, and because I had accomplished that, and then now that I own Settlers Glen with Ivo Cole, people naturally put those together, but they're completely separate projects, no connection whatsoever with the Dakota project.
But there is common ownership?
No, there is not, none whatsoever. Ivo Cole and I own the LLC 100%, Dakota owns their property 100%.
And the management company for one side of the street is not one and the same as the management company for the other side of the street?
No, Dakota, Dakota self-manages, they do their own management, and we've elected to hire an independent management firm.
They can't get the, the maintenance guy from Dakota can't run across the street and...
Absolutely not, no connection whatsoever.
Those are my questions.
There's not, there's anything wrong with that, I think it's...
No, I just, you know...
It would have been nice to be...
It's, it's a public forum, and the public should be listening, so either the public needs to be properly informed or misinformed, you know?
Absolutely, that's why we're here tonight, to help you with that process.
All right, a couple of concerns, if it's gonna be rental, we'd like, I'd like to see a grinder pump on the sewer, because unfortunately, I would say, like others have concern with rentals versus homeowners, tend to throw more stuff on toilets and stuff, so we'd like to see a grinder pump to help the sewer department minimize that problem.
We're prepared to do that, Mr. Chairman, on an individual connection basis, not so that each unit's discharge pipe would have a grinder on it.
10 or 20 grinders?
20 grinders.
20 grinders.
That, that would be acceptable.
You want to do 20 grinders?
Well, we think that that's actually more cost-effective than one giant grinder.
Yes, the smaller grinder for a single-family home is about $1,500. If you put a grinder pump required for an 8-inch main to a municipal service, it costs about $150,000. So we don't mind accommodating, and I have, my engineer has been in touch with Guy, the superintendent.
Is he okay with that?
And we were discussing exactly that. So I don't mind the condition that says subject to his approval, but we are focused on systems that he will be okay with, just of a smaller nature.
For the record, I had a conversation with Mr. Campina this week on that specific subject, and he does in fact prefer a grinder per unit.
Oh, good.
For multiple reasons, and one of those reasons is that if there's one grinder down, there's still 19 running.
Correct, correct.
All right, good. Are you gonna have an office onsite for management, or no? No, there's no room. Any like playgrounds or anything like this you're planning to do?
Yes, they're not on the plans now, but we actually put in underground drainage system, if you noticed from the last approval, and then we can put a playground area with mulch bed on the base, so that's what we're pricing out now. It's about, you know, 20, 25,000, so we're gonna add that into the program.
Okay.
That's an advantage as well over the for-sale, because those homeowners were all gonna have to get together and agree on how they would spend their money on the playground, now you're gonna get a playground, so...
Jake?
Nothing.
Rich?
I just have the same concerns as Veronica about a ton of rentals in there and not being owned, owned individually. I just feel that the neighborhood, it's all been just houses down there, and I don't know, kind of feels like it's kind of poking the neighbors in the eye and bringing their property value down in a way, but that's, that's just my, my opinion.
Okay.
I agree.
You agree?
I can say though, that, and I understand where that concern may be, but I think what you want to, you know, remember too, or consider as well, is that with a management company, as Mark had said, there's going to be a single contractor who would be responsible for the upkeep of all of the grounds. So it will be uniform grounds, it'll be on a regular basis as part of a contract, unlike homeownership where we all like to think that people take ownership and take great pride in their homes, but I have many a people I've seen that own homes, that they work too much, they don't, they can't afford to bring in a landscaper, so you have, you know, half the property looks great, and half the property doesn't look so great. So please consider, you know, that that is an advantage, can be an advantage, when you, when you are using a management company that's bringing in contractors and taking care of that, which is what is happening in a rental versus an ownership.
Mr. Chairman?
It is, definitely, I think it's an advantage.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I did include in the board's package, which were the published rents from Mass. Housing Partnership.
Yeah.
And it shows that the affordable unit, two-bedroom, which we have none of, this five three-bedroom affordables, the two-bedroom would be $2,273 a month, and the three-bedroom was $2,627 a month.
What's the market value for those?
Probably close to the same.
What it will bear?
You know, we're, we're not expecting that they're, you know, you have to make a considerable income, whatever's published for income, I think it's 70,000 or 80,000 is the max, to even qualify for these, so...
I think that's an important point, that this is not, when Avalon Bay does a project, they do a luxury project. 25% of the units are rented between 70 and 80% of area median income adjusted for household size. That's the max that's allowed by DHCD. There are other kinds of projects in which all the units are rented at 50% of AMI adjusted for household size, it's a very different project. What Mr. O'Brien's proposing to build is the Avalon Bay model. 25% of the units, it's 70 to 80% of AMI adjusted for household size. So that's, that's a project that's gonna attract people who are in the school system, that are in the police department, in the town employee list, those are the people that we're targeting here, in the affordable units.
All right, before I go to the public, what's the alternative if the board says no?
Well, we do have rights to go to the Housing Appeals Committee, but I'd rather not, frankly, so we hope that you see that this is a, it's a different kind of asset, but it's just as good an asset. It's the same people, they're just renting instead of buying. There's no difference between the clientele here. When I, I rebuilt my house four years ago, my builder was a bummy, went probably up in bankrupt, left my wife and I with no home, we rented a unit in a project called Concord Muse, and it's an affordable housing complex with 300 units, but we loved it, the people were wonderful, they took care of their units on a daily basis, it was friendly, it was social, there was a community feeling there. There were some kids, it was, you know, there were ones and twos in the, in the complex, but I, the people took pride in their community in the same way as if they owned it.
All right, been a long night tonight, so I'm gonna go to the public. Who wants to speak in favor of this project? In favor first? I hear none, okay, let's hear the against. Again, yeah, wanna come forward, one at a time?
You want me to move, Mr. Chairman, or...
No, they could sit next to Kenny.
Okay, thank you.
Kenny, wanna squeeze on my chair, please?
Did Chelly leave?
Yeah.
Have a seat, have a seat.
She's all warmed up for you.
Name and address for the record?
Hi, Debbie Edo, 41 Monac Road, Buzzards Bay. First it was a really pretty presentation, I appreciate that effort. The first time I heard about this was from a selectman who let me know that the building was, or that there was gonna be a 20-unit building going up for the townhomes. His next words, without any prompting, was, but they're gonna be owners, owner occupied, there's not gonna be rentals. Which leads me to believe that that was a huge consideration in whether or not to grant the license or permit or whatever it is that would allow this building to go up. Across the street from the proposed building now is a 148-unit rental property that's going up. And I don't care how well you vent, I mean, you vet the people that are gonna be moving in, whether, whether they're, if they're renting, and the fact that they have money, or it's gonna require more money, doesn't matter, it doesn't make them a better person. So with 148 units there, and now 20 more coming in across the street, and then there's another building going up, and there's so much going on there, and there's so many rentals, and renters don't take care of the properties as well as owners, owners do. And it's not saying that all owners do it perfectly, but it's saying there's a much larger percentage of renters that don't take care of the property than there are owners, because the owners own it, it's their investment in their future. So I would argue strongly that renting and owning are different. Renting is not better. Owners have much more investment, not only in their homes and the land that they're living on, but the community that they're living in, because again, it's a vested interest, it's not a transitory type of population that's gonna be in and out, and not totally respecting, or even probably knowing what's going on sometimes in the community, because they're not there permanently, what do they care? So I really, I'm down the street from the place anyway, I already can't stand the fact that the 148 units are gonna be there, because the congestion is gonna be horrible, and again, the transitory population, you don't know what you're getting, but it's highly unlikely that they're gonna care for the property as well as an ownership type of property would be going on. So I would please beg this board not to allow them to switch it from ownership to rental.
All right, thank you. Next. All right, please come forward, whoever would like to, anyone?
Lucille Dodson, and I live at Fairing Street in the Indian Mom Beach neighborhood, which is literally just down the street from all the congestion of Dakota, this project, the retail shop that's going in there. I've been living in this neighborhood since, well, 22 years basically, full-time. Since that time, the neighborhood has so much improved with people investing in their homes, and the values and all kinds of things have been going on in a positive way since I first moved in. We are very concerned as a neighborhood that all of this construction going on where Dakota is, and now with this project going across the street, is gonna make our neighborhood devalued in our properties, that we all have invested into our property. So I am here to please and beg, do not allow, they got their permits to have it be ownership, not rental. We are very concerned, you know, having Dakota, as you all know, we fought hard against Dakota, we didn't want to see it in there, we know the congestion's gonna go on, we're worried about our neighborhood, what's gonna be coming in. Our neighborhood has cleaned up a lot, from drug dealing going on, to all kinds of problems that we've had, that I personally have witnessed in 22 years. And whatever you say about a management company, I don't care, because today's homes, even what's considered affordable to own a home, people take pride in owner that, owning that home, and it takes a lot of money to invest to buy a property. So I disagree with you as far as any management place is going to be with renting. So I urge, urge strongly to not grant them the right to turn this into rental property. As I said, we're gonna be dealing long-term with what's gonna be going on with Dakota, and all the rentals that's gonna be going on, and all the craziness going on there. I don't want to see it worse and worse and worse. And it just doesn't make sense. And I know myself, I invested in my own property, I put money into my own property, fixed up my own home. My value came up, I don't want to see it go down. And that's the bottom line, along with, I don't want to see our neighborhood change from all of the years of investing, getting it to improved neighborhood. That's pretty much all I have to say.
All right, thank you. One?
Come on up.
Name and address, please.
Hi, Nazee.
Oh, hi.
Brenda Ekstrom, 64 White Tunis Ave. I would plead with the board not to allow this, nothing personal, but it essentially was a bait and switch. We were told that it was gonna be housing, and what they're not telling you all, and I understand why you were confused with this, Mr. Iko Baki, sorry, thank you, is because while we'll get 15 more affordable homes in our account, and if you remember, town meeting has approved some specific affordable housing things that are going through, that are being reviewed at the AG's office, which may solve our problem themselves. But this particular thing, what they're not telling you is yes, 25% of them will be 75 to 80%, which he said was, what, $2,300 or something for a three-bedroom? What he doesn't tell you, it's gonna be $3,200, that's the 100% rate, and that's what they can charge. So we're concerned about affordable housing, this is going in the opposite direction. 75% of them are going to go for the market rate, which is in, we're in the Boston market, so you're talking about $3,200. And then what's gonna happen is if they can't find that, then they're gonna go to the state and they're gonna ask for, for Section 8 vouchers. And so now you're gonna have a three-bedroom, probably with five or six kids, which is gonna burden our school systems even more, whereas if you're a homeowner and you have three bedrooms, you have two or three kids usually, because you can't afford anymore. But if you are in a Section 8 system, so the government is paying, the state or federal government is paying $3,200 for you to live there, or I'm sorry, $3,150, and you pay 50. There's... there's nothing to stop you from having more kids. And those are the ones that are gonna be in there. Those are the long-term ones that you're gonna be dealing with. The one-year transient people, you're not gonna have those ones in there. And you also have, we're talking about, oh, we're gonna do a playground. Well, I'm sure you guys have something for the hundred and fifty units, but there's also a playground about two hundred yards up the street. That, you know what? Let the town, the Playground Committee that's going through, they'll be doing improvements over there. Or let them give money towards that. But as far as renting these, all as it is, it's a cash cow for them. And it's gonna screw the town in the long run. And Mr. Brombowski, Attorney Brombowski, I admire your work so much. Mr. Brombowski is literally the one who wrote the zoning book in Massachusetts. And I love your work, I read it. But as far as for affordable housing, this is gonna be a bigger detriment to the town. This is what's happening at the one, at the corner of Glen Charlie. They can't rent out the market rate ones because no one will pay that much. So they sectionate them. We're here, and we already have a problem. We're one of the poorest communities in the state. We have one of the highest elderly populations in the state. Let's try to solve those problems rather than giving people that are not even from here to walk all over us. And I will say nothing against you as, I'm sure you do a very good job. I'm, I'm not here to criticize if they're gonna watch the place or not. But a previous speaker said that there's a lot to be said for homeownership. A few years ago, I had cancer. We were in and out of Boston. We didn't really give a crap about what our house looked like. It was our neighbors that came over and mowed our lawn. It was the neighbors that came over and shoveled our snow. Those are not the bonds you build in apartment complexes. Those are the bonds you build with your neighbors. And so I beg you. I have a daughter right now who is looking for a house. She can't touch a house right now. She was all excited that these were going in. She thought she could buy one. She was like, a duplex, a condo, this'll be great. And now there's no chance of that, if you allow this to go through. There are plenty of people out there that want to buy. And if you know anything about the economics, homeownership is the first step to building up wealth. So if you care about the people in this community, and you want this community to actually pick itself up, then let people invest in themselves and for themselves instead of putting it in the pockets of other people. So please, I urge you to vote no. Let them take you to Housing Court. And I, and I'll, I'll go right there, and I'll argue that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs., Mrs. Ekstrom, right?
Yes.
What do you think the result will be at housing? Honest answer.
I think if I go, I think there's a good chance we could shut it down. Because I think that we have about twenty more days for the Attorney General's Office to come back with the affordable housing.
Can you come, yeah?
Come back to the microphone.
I know you're knowledgeable in politics, so I'd like to hear from you.
Okay. I think at the Housing Court, I think if I go and I speak, I think we have a good chance. Because I'm the one that wrote the bylaw for the affordable housing. It's a unique, original, creative way to do housing. We already had a ninety-day review. They just asked for another thirty days because they can't find anything to compare it to. Sorry, I'm getting all dehydrated here. So I think that I'd like to take that shot.
So you think based on the new bylaw just passed Town Meeting, the housing, the housing authorities will turn it down? Honest question.
Yeah.
You think so?
Yeah. Because I think that the day that I get the letter that says it's approved or that it needs any adjustments or whatever, and it's done, I am already prepared, I've already done all the work. I'm prepared to start doing, holding sessions with, with developers, small, you know, contractors, homeowners, people who are interested in helping solve the problem.
Right. But you don't have nothing on the ground. How are you gonna implement this? You don't have physical houses.
You wait, Nazee, you wait. You'll be lining up at the door with everyone else. I absolutely, if it, if it gets through, it will work. But even not, but even if, if you don't wanna have any faith in the town.
No, 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 I have faith in everything. I believe in everything. I mean, I always like to give it.
I still think.
What'd you say?
I said if you don't wanna have faith in the town doing this.
I have more faith in this town more than anyone else. That's why I invest in it.
I know you do. I know you do. But I, I would say that, I think that if we go to Housing Court using those arguments, I think we have a good shot.
Ah, we'll see what the board decides. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Someone else? Anyone else? Yes, yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I'm not here for this meeting.
That's okay.
I'm here for this one, but...
My name is Liz Cabreal. I live at Nine Camp Street, and I'm new to Wareham. I will tell you that I just moved here in the spring in the ridiculous housing market. And listening, I don't think that you can rent places like that in Wareham at over three thousand dollars a month. And I agree that if you can't rent them at that market rate, then you do end up with people that you didn't expect. And so somebody who's just an outsider listening, I agree that when it was approved to be ownership, that it is a bait and switch. So that is just somebody having no background and just listening today.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Okay.
May I just?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number one, we're not Dakota, so we don't know Dakota. We don't do Dakota. We're not gonna act like Dakota, because we're not Dakota. So that should be jettisoned right there. Number two, and I guess I'll just leave it here. Who do you trust more to mow the lawn and pick up the garbage at that place? Cheryl Nichols or a guy you haven't met yet? Who do you trust more?
Well, I have a question on that vein. These, when they were approved as condexes, duplex, this was gonna be a condominium association, I would assume.
Yes.
And to my knowledge, every condominium association in the town of Wareham has a management company, just like an apartment complex. And condominium associations usually have a professional landscaper. And all the lawns get mowed out of the condominium dues. And I would assume if they were owned, that they'd be condominium fees paid by the owners, just like every other condominium in the town of Wareham. So I gotta tell you, and I want my board to hear it, I'm starting to lean in the direction of ownership.
All right, okay.
Not every condo association is the gold-plated condo association.
This one will be.
Many of them leave the garbage pickup and the lawn mowing to the private individuals because they have exclusive use areas.
I understand, but I remember when this was approved, and I made a, a specific point about trash. But I think you'll find it's in the decision.
That, that's, that's fine. Let's go back. Chris, what do you got? What do you think?
I think it should remain home, homeownership also.
All right, Veronica.
I one-hundred percent agree that it should be homeownership because, again, the same thing with the rental values. It's not on here. It doesn't say Plymouth County or Wareham. So if you didn't know what to look at, that actually Wareham is under Boston, it's a little bit deceiving to see what, where these rents are. You would think it would be closer to New Bedford. It's not. People in this town will not be able to afford the rents at market rate, so I one-hundred percent want it to be homeownership.
All right. Tori?
I agree.
Rich?
I've said enough already.
Jake?
I'm okay.
All right. I, I have to say I do agree with the management company to take care of the place versus... Because if you have one condo owner said, don't wanna... This is besides the whole idea, if it's rental or homeowner, but you could have one person says, I'm not gonna clean my trash, and you can't set a foot on his yard. And he'll tell you, I wanna keep it going crazy, and he put trash, and don't cut the grass. I do, I am a believer in good management company because they can't afford not to run it properly. They run credit check, all this. That's what I do as a landlord, so... But anyway, that's besides the point. The, the board has its opinion. Before we go, before we close, if you wish to close, or you wanna continue?
Jim? I think, at, at this point, I don't have a whole lot of hope talking five of you into this, so I think we'll close.
You wanna close?
Yes.
Anyone else, any more inputs before we close? Okay.
Make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing?
Okay, I have a motion to close two-dash-twenty-one Settlers Glen. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Veronica. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pause, abstain. All right. Now, which the wishes?
It's not gonna be by me.
Any motions?
I'll, I'll make a motion to deny the application to make these rental, a rental, make this a rental property.
Just motion to deny the application.
Motion to deny the application.
Okay, we have a motion to deny the, the special, the, what do you call it? The comprehensive, the substantial change of the comprehensive permit, two-dash-twenty-one Settlers Glen by Veronica. Do I have a second on denying?
I second.
All right. All in favor to deny, and this is Jake, Richard, me, Veronica, and Jim. All in favor to deny, say aye.
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 Abstain.
Aye.
And I abstain.
You get three, you get three votes and two abstentions. It's denied.
Denied. Simple majority.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. Don't be so happy. I hate to let you see the end result, but... You'll get your, unfortunately, but... All right, very good. Sixty... Sixty-dash-twenty-one Craig Churchill, special permit or a variance, forty-five Webster Street.
Do we have to write something up on that last one?
I'll take care of it tomorrow.
Thank you.
We need to sign.
I didn't, I don't want the signature page with me today, but I'll take care of that tomorrow.
All right, now listen.
Let's have these from the last one. Let's have them into the folder.
Everybody gotta make sure, go sign this, because I'm sure it's gonna be appealed. So everybody gotta go have to sign it. If we don't sign it, we lose. It's a definite loss. So if you have any chance of winning, if we have any chance to win it, which I don't think we will, but... So you have to go sign everybody the decision at Sonia before they appeal it. Aaron, can you make sure you nag him online? So Jim, when you sign, just abstain, make sure you're right abstain. All right.
These go on this one. This goes. What's next?
Sixty-dash-twenty-one.
Churchill.
Aaron, do you have these decisions for these hearings? All right.
By the way, did you take your folder home?
I have it, so I must have.
Okay, you brought it back?
Yeah.
Okay, she was looking for it. I just... This needs to be ready and correct?
Yes, please.
The Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on December eighth, two thousand twenty-one, at six-thirty PM in room three-twenty of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. zero-two-five-seven-one, to consider petition number sixty-dash-twenty-one for a special permit and/or variance from the requirements of Article Six, Table six-two-eight, and Article Thirteen, Section one-three-five-two, under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Craig Churchill of thirty-four Dr. Childs Road, New Hampshire, New Hampton, New Hampshire, oh-three-eight-two-four, seeking to alter the existing dwelling located at forty-five Webster Street, Wareham, Mass. That appears on Assessors Map Three, one-thirty-three, in the MR thirty zoning district.
All right. Name and address for the racket. Tell us what you're doing.
My name is Frank Westgate. I did the survey and the plan work for this project. My address is one-eighty-nine Main Street here in Wareham.
Okay.
I'm Doug Churchill. I'm here representing my son Craig, who's indisposed this evening. Address is one-hundred Nedbury Road, New Hampshire.
All right, very well. So let's hear what we're doing. Sir, one thought, what we're doing?
Yeah, the project is pretty straightforward. It's a single-family dwelling. He wants to add a second story. It'll be on this, within the same footprint. The variance or special permit is because of the lot is non-conforming. All of the lots in that subdivision are non-conforming. You should have in your file a letter from the Butters who, who are in favor of what my client wants to do there.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten signatures.
So you wanna add a second floor, you said?
A second floor, and that's correct. You should show on that drawing.
This is back to FAR again.
Yeah, I know. All right, let's start by Chris. Chris, what do you have? So this is the deal, this, this is an existing non-conforming. If the board finds that less detrimental, not so detrimental to the neighborhood, we could address it as a special permit. If the board finds it so detrimental, it would be a variance. And I believe in this one, the FAR... Let me see, the inspector, what does he say?
It was twenty-five percent, I saw in the letter.
It's from fourteen-point-six to twenty-eight, and they're allowed twenty-five there for FAR. So this is that, they need a variance if the board finds it's a variance or a special permit. So what you wish is, Chris, what's your comment?
So you're just raising, adding a second floor, it looks like, onto a single-family home?
Yeah. I would point out, it's a cape with a low-pitched roof on it, and there is a room up above it at the time. So essentially, we're putting on a full dormers. It's actually dormers that are going on. And, you know, obviously, the roof will go up according to the plan that is indicated.
What is, what is the rest of the architectural plans? Do you have them?
I'm sorry.
The architectural plans, the full, full plans, where are they?
Do you have one, or will you have one?
Yeah, I have.
I just have this.
It wasn't, it's, we was asked of us to report, to submit it.
While you're looking for them, Veronica, what do you think?
I, I thought because this was not an existing non-conformity that that would just would be, have to be treated as a variance. I've just, to clarify that.
What's that?
This is not an existing non-conformity. The FAR is currently conforming, so this would be a variance to approve it.
Right, but the, the lot is an existing non-conforming.
Right.
So it's an existing non-confor-
The FAR is conforming, and so each component of it is... This has been stated several times by the Building Commissioner that it's, if it's FAR is conforming, then to change it would be a variance. If the setback is conforming, to change it would be a variance. If it's non-conforming FAR, then it would be a special permit if it were increasing the non-conformity.
What she's saying is that we really can't treat it as a special permit.
Oh, oh, okay, I see this. Article six, six-twenty-eight. I was reading thirteen-fifty-two, sorry. Alternative expression of... Alteration or expansion of.
Yeah, a question, on the architectural drawings, don't they come into play when he, when he goes for the actual building permit?
They should be part of your application.
Oh.
The, I have them here. Do you want the complete?
Yeah, let's look at it, but Veronica, read this properly.
Okay.
Read from the building commissioner this and read in the back, I think you're wrong. It's an existing non-conforming lot, you could extend the non-conformity. I know what you're saying about the FAR, but I guess.
But he specifically also underlines that this, it says specifically, your proposal would create a new non-conformity which requires a variance.
Right, and then go to Article 13, 1352, for non-conforming structure.
Yeah.
And alteration or expansion of a lawful, lawfully pre-existing non-conforming, that's a non-conforming residential because of setback, it's right on the property line. He wouldn't have written that if it wasn't the case.
I might add that within that subdivision, none of the lots that are in there, or the buildings, are in conformity with the current zoning, it's an old, old subdivision.
See what he's saying?
Yeah.
Do you have that full set of plan architecture, can we look at it?
Yeah, I'm trying to put it together.
This says otherwise, so there's confusion here, so this is.
Well, in the first one, first letter, he's saying it requires a variance, and then the next sub, you know, 1352 under Article 13 says that the board can treat it as a special permit.
I'd like to point out that my son, his family came under quarantine this afternoon, so that's why I'm not here, he had all the paperwork, so I just happened to have a set of the plans, but I didn't know, I don't have, we have two people that have.
So will, the chairman, we're just looking at dormers being put on the house, I went by that neighborhood, took a look at everything, he's not making it a monstrosity, the rest of the neighborhood, it looks like it, I think it'll be, dress it up a little bit and make it more usable for the folks that'll live in there.
Tori, what do you think?
I feel like it would definitely improve the house and the neighborhood, I don't think that it should be an issue.
Okay, Jake?
As long as the foundation can support it.
Right, that will be building code, the commissioner would decide that.
I see nothing wrong with this project.
Anyone in the public who wants to speak in favor of this project, or against? Veronica, the, when the commissioner, just to explain this to you, the commissioner, when he identified this here in the dimension standards, what he calls a variance, however, because they are existing non-conforming, he jumps to 13, they qualify under the 1352, that's, you know what I'm saying? If you look at all his letters, that's how he identified the issue, then he.
He always says it that way, first he tells you the problem, then he tells you the solution.
Right. If there is no solution, he wouldn't write that, 1352. Not that it's a solution, but they're eligible for it.
Comes up every time, and I'm confused by it every time.
It's available as a solution.
Because it says, I'm going to have to research it, I just want to make sure that we're voting on whether it's a variance or a special permit, but it's not a big change.
Well, we'll have to decide if it's a variance, special permit. So if there's no one in the audience who wants to speak, I think we should move to close.
So moved.
I have a motion to close, which one is this one? 60-21, do I have a second? Motion to close.
Second.
Second by Jake, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, so it's closed 5-0-0 now. How does the board feel, does it feel it's a variance or a special permit?
In light of the fact that there's a letter here signed by 10 neighbors, I think it's very easy to make the decision that this could be treated as a special permit.
Okay.
Certainly not detrimental to the neighborhood if the whole neighborhood's in favor of it.
Okay, I have a motion by Jim, do I have a second on special permit?
I second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain.
I'm prepared to make a motion right now for approval based on what I've seen, I don't need to see architectural drawings, I think we should condition that the drawings be turned in, you know, but I think that's a requirement of a permit anyway. This FAR thing comes back at us constantly, again, the footprint's not changing, floor area ratio, I understand there's an argument towards density, but I think the entire board knows how I feel about it, I think it's a punitive rule, so I'm prepared to make a motion to grant relief as requested with standard conditions.
Okay, do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by Jake, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, 5-0-0 carries, thank you.
I think that's his copy.
All right, next one, 61-21 William Bayshant, 81 11th Street.
Can we have everything on that one back for the folder, please?
Hold on to this.
And you're going to get our signatures.
I think there is a.
You guys pass that paperwork back through the board, you get it?
I'm confused about that.
Oh, you didn't have to get up?
Oh, he's good.
Stay and borrow your pen.
Good idea.
Forgot a pen tonight.
I borrowed yours before, by the way.
Don't take his name tag off now, geez, bad enough we got him here.
Okay.
All right, let's read it, I'm sorry.
And it gets hot with these masks.
Thank you, Aaron.
All right, Jimbo.
This was, everything's in here now.
61-21 Bayshant.
Okay, 61-21. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on December 8th, 2021 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571. To consider petition number 61-21 for a variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 622, and Article 14, Section 1470, under the Wareham zoning bylaws, to William Bayshant of 9 Tyler Avenue, Wareham, Mass., proposing to approve two non-conforming parcels from one conforming building lot, and erect a new dwelling located at 8 11th Street, Wareham, Mass., Assessors Map 1, Lot 445B and 447B, in the Onset Village 2 zoning district.
Hi, counsel.
Hi, Attorney Gillian Morton, 184 Main Street, I am here representing the applicant, who's actually, I can tell him on the phone, but he is sick as well. So we're, we're looking at a unique situation here, I'd like to draw your attention, if you do have the packets, do you have any other materials, okay. Looking at that certified plot plan, because I think that's what's going to help, take a look at what's going on here. This plan was approved through the planning board, it's a unique lot shape, it's a corner lot that had two dwellings on it, so we went through the Wareham planning board in order to divide those lots, and then the commissioner rightly understood that although we can create these two non-conforming lots, that we'd have to go seek zoning relief. And as far as going for the variances here, I'm seeing the fact that we're creating these new lots, you need 10,000 square feet, so we're short on the actual square footage of the lot. And we do have frontage, on one, on the actual proposed dwelling. I note, too, that we're actually reducing some of the non-conformity, if you look at the small lots over here in this area in Onset, this is OV2. So a lot of those lots, and I actually did a printout of, if you look on 11 Streets and the other, they're small, they're 5,000 square feet, some of them are under 5,000, some of them are a little under, so it's actually making it more conforming, this lot had two existing dwellings on it, which is not what we, this is moving towards a more, a more actually conforming structure, it's just that we're, we're actually, don't have the square footage, because if you create a new lot in OV2, you need 10,000 square feet. But it does characterize itself as a unique lot, it's not substantially more detriment to the neighborhood, I would argue that it's actually making it more conforming in the fact that these lots are going to be split, so the ownership could be separate, there won't be two primary residences on one lot. So, you can answer any questions you have.
All right, so there's two lot, two dwelling on that parcel?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so just to be clear, so there's two dwelling in the parcel, they went to planning board, planning board gave them a line in the middle to separate them if we give them a variance, and so I guess I totally understand why they're doing this, because I'm doing something like that myself, it makes, ownership is easier, there's no condo fees, there's no separate tax bills and everything, so keep in mind, we're not creating another lot, we're just making it cleaner, that's all it is.
Right.
So we're not making a lot to build another house, there's already two houses there. Start by Chris.
So there's two houses there, on the one lot, it says, "existing dwelling to be raised," does that mean the other dwelling's going to be torn down, is that?
Yeah, there's an existing house on, I guess it's Lot 47, 447B, and he's proposing to kind of shift it over, so it'll have that 10-foot setback, which is actually in more compliance with the small lot, so yeah, that one would be raised, but obviously, there's two structures there now, if he would have torn that down, that would have killed the grandfathering there, so that's, that's why we're here in front of you now.
So, by making two lots with this property here, what that allows for each of these buildings is to become a two-family, so then you would end up with four here, because by right, one or two-family dwelling is in this district, so I am not for this project, I think that this needs to stay one lot as it is, if it's split, then each dwelling can then become two families.
Even for 5,000 square feet?
If it's, if it's here, it says here, if you look at the maximum lot area square footage, one or two-family dwelling for OV2, by right, right?
One second, one second, it doesn't matter, one second.
Do you have to have a number of square feet?
No, well, it's, if I'm, someone can convince me otherwise of this.
Let me get my zoning code.
What are we, 100 Dodge 2?
Yeah, I just don't want to see this.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, just one minute.
You need 10,000 square feet.
But we're saying it's okay to have five, right now, they have 10, so they can have two dwellings. If we cut this to five, it's existing, and it's one or two.
We do have two dwellings.
But then, if this is, if this is now one lot.
Yeah.
They can still have one or two.
One second.
Correct?
No.
Yes.
One and two-family dwelling, if you have one or two-family dwellings, you need.
10,000 square feet.
We're saying they only need five if we approve this.
You could condition it as a single family, if you like.
One second, everybody look without argument.
They need 10,000, and they don't have 10,000.
Right, but we're going to permit them, if we approve this, to have 5,000, to have a one or two-family dwelling, we're permitting that.
Mr. Jag, may I ask a question?
Can I ask?
One second, please, go ahead.
I went by to review the property, and if I got what I got out of this and this, there's one piece of property that has like a, looks like a movie set scene, there's a building, front, couple walls, but it all looks like it's fallen down, is that the, what I went by?
Um, I don't know if there's.
I mean, it looks like some kind of a stage for a TV show, it's just an old, it's an old building, it's just falling into the ground.
A lot of those are.
And then, I don't know what the town, there's a guy down the end of that street that has more motor vehicles and things, I don't know what's going on with him, but that's a little ridiculous, I'd like to see that cleaned up. But that is the property, right? It has that little, I've never seen anything like it, I mean, it's, the building is standing by will and will alone, I think.
All right, anyway, I looked at the bylaw, you need 10,000 square feet for the first two, and each additional 4,000, Onset Village 2, so they can't have a second.
Okay, so, so if you go OV1.
OV1?
If you go.
Oh, sorry, 5,000, and OV1 or OV2?
We're OV2.
OV1 is 5,000, correct, so we're OV2, but if we drop that down, by permitting this, we're dropping it to each parcel now as, has.
So it's OV2?
It's still OV2, but we're allowing 5,000 square feet for that one residence.
Right.
But it says one or two.
One or two, but in order to make two, you need 14,000.
If you make two, you need 10.
I don't believe so.
You need.
I don't think so, I think by approving it, we're, because, because we're saying, no, you don't need 10, you need, you can have five, because we're allowing this to happen.
Right.
So it's one or two for this.
Right, one or two, if you have a comply, if you have 6,000 square feet lot, sorry, it's OV2, if you have 14,000 square feet, you're allowed for two, two units, a duplex, but you need 14,000.
Whether it's one family, whether it's one family or two-family, you need a minimum of 10,000 square feet to build.
No, for one family, 10, each additional 4, so you need 14.
Now, I think you could put a two-family on a 10,000 square foot lot in OV2.
No, look at this, Jimmy, other residential use, first dwelling, 10,000 square feet, each additional 4,000.
For, so it says for other residential use, the main residential use is one or two-family, and it says 5, 10, 75, go across, then it goes down, it says other residential use, first dwelling in each additional unit, if you look down at the bottom, it says 2,000 square feet if an existing structure, and then 2,000 square feet for each additional unit up to 40 units.
Those numbers down below refer to where they're used up here, see how the one and the two and the three are used up in here, those refer to, see the star units with the numbers.
But, but I'm just saying that if this is written as a separate line item to say one or two-family at 5,000 or 10,000, why then would below it say that you need five or 10 for a, for a single and then add more, it's saying one or two-family.
Listen to me, what you're reading in the bottom, one, 2,000 square feet for in existence structure, that's for star one, for instance, look in WV1, you know how it says 10,000 star one, and under it, 2,000 star two entry, that's the explanation in the bottom, that does not apply to Onset Village 2, you see the first.
That's a footnote.
What's that?
It's like a footnote, star one is to.
The footnotes, those apply elsewhere, what she, her argument is.
Do you understand?
On the Onset Village 2, which is what we're considering.
Yeah.
Right.
You're required to have 10,000 square feet.
For the first one.
You're going to create two lots that don't have 10,000 square feet.
I think the concern is that they're going to be duplexes.
And each have a single-family residence on them, so if we grant relief, our relief can.
Single-family, I think it would be fine with that.
For her concern, we could certainly say it's granted, subject to a single-family use only.
So if somebody comes along with 14,000 square feet lot, they could put a duplex, 10,000, single-family, 11,000, single-family.
I would just say this, there's a reason this is written differently than, say, the other one that says one-family dwelling, 30,000, two-family dwelling, 45,000.
30,000, that's MR, that's MR30.
I understand, but I'm just saying that it's presented differently because it has a different meaning, but as long as it's going to stay a single-family.
Right.
And that's a restriction.
There's, there's no restriction on a variance, it is.
We could, we could, we could further restrict with our decision, couldn't we?
Not on a variance, you could restrict a special permit, not a variance, it's what's before you to split the slot, but I'm telling you, I know this bylaw.
I feel that it's written differently from other things because it has a different meaning, and I do think that that meaning is it's one or two.
One or two, but you need to have the square footage.
At that square footage. Unless we approve otherwise.
Exactly, unless, if they come back for a variance, they want to put five units, and we say yes, it's a yes, but they need a variance, okay? Okay.
It's not an automatic two-family.
No.
Once we split it.
Needs 14,000. Okay, so who else would like to have a question? In the public, wanna, somebody wants to speak in favor, against, ma'am, you want to speak your thoughts?
I have some questions.
Come in.
So I am the person.
You gotta come up and say your name and stuff, before you talk too much.
Name and address for the record.
My name's Elizabeth Cabreal, I live at 9 Camp Street, which is the other unit, that existing four-bedroom dwelling was a flip, so when this property was purchased. So, when this property was purchased, then the Mr. Bashant went and split the property. So, the one half that's already built, the house is built, I bought it, and now...
You're the one on the corner with 12 and Camp?
Yes, I'm the one at 9 Camp. And the Mr. Semple, who went and saw the structure, it is now not part of my property. And the reason it hasn't been raised is so that he can use the property as it is. But what has not come up is I wanted to make sure that all the utilities and the sewer and the water were separate. And in my conversation, it did come up that there would be an easement for sewer access on the new property, that it would be on the new property deed. And so, I didn't know if this is the place that that comes up and that gets in the record.
I can speak to that, Mr. Chairman.
No, if you... The sewer easement will have the sewer... That would be the sewer department.
Yes, I understand, but an easement is required. And I don't want it on my deed. It will be on the new property, so...
They can't have an easement on your property without signing. So, apparently, they can't go on your property.
I'm sorry, maybe I don't understand your...
They cannot have an easement on your property if you don't sign for it.
If you don't agree to it.
No, right, but because it was one property, it is shared sewer. And so, we're going to have the access on the new property. And that's just something I need documented. Now, I just want to make sure.
Here's what I don't understand...
Yeah, I spoke to the client about that.
When you're ready.
Yeah, go ahead.
This woman, maybe I'm... Again, maybe I wasn't listening carefully. You live at 9 Camp Street?
Bought on May 5th this year.
Okay, you bought on May 5th, 2021, 9 Camp Street?
Correct.
All right. And on May 5th, 2021, did not 9 Camp Street include all of both these lots?
It did not.
How could they convey...
The property split was done before I closed. And that's why I was raising my hand in the audience.
How did you buy something? I don't understand how this was conveyed. I don't understand.
So, as my understanding, that's why I was having trouble keeping my mouth shut in the audience.
The lot's not split, how was it so...
It is split.
If I have a car, how can I sell half the car?
Who split it?
So, I was told by my lawyer, and my lawyer would not do my closing until it was documented in the registry of deeds in Plymouth that the property was split.
ANR was recorded.
It was recorded.
She got lot... That lot...
Yeah, but ANR, that's not an ANR. You wouldn't be here if it wasn't a...
There's an ANR. I didn't bring it. The planning board approved the ANR.
That's a wrong... It's a defective one. ANR would... If it's an ANR, it would be 10,000 square feet with 75-foot frontage. So, for some reason...
But I can check on that, but I was sold.
All I could tell you, this is something you'll have... It becomes a civil matter. As far as I'm concerned, that's not what's before us. The planning board should have not... No, the planning board can put a line and send the applicant to zone it to get a variance. But the applicant cannot record it or cannot... He can record it if they put the line, but he cannot sell it legally without a variance. So, I don't know how your lawyer closed on it.
No, 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 it's... I don't... As far as I understand, I don't own that. Mr. Bashant owns that.
You don't own 9. You own 9.
No, I own 9. I do not own this other part of the property.
There's a piece on... There's a new one, frontage is on 11th Street.
You know what? If the rest are recorded for him, good for him, but it wasn't supposed to.
This doesn't surprise me. I'll leave it at that.
I know, but it...
I'm just saying, I live there. I bought it.
I know, but...
I'm just giving you the whole picture. I don't know all the details before. I will not understand all the details after. I just... It's very...
But when you bought it, you thought you were buying... What shows here is 5,446.
And I will tell you, there was a lot of jumping through hoops to make sure the closing happened, to make sure the split happened, and because he didn't...
But you believed you bought 5446 square feet, not...
I do believe that.
Not 10,000?
Right, right. Which is good, but the process was done. It was done wrong. It needed a variance before that. But anyway...
I hope I am not a victim of the process.
No, no, you're not, but it shouldn't have happened. It shouldn't have been sold without this variance approved. And planning board should have known better before we signed that bylaw. But anyway, I guess they signed and recorded. God forbid, if that was me. All right, anyway. Doing that, so at least you know what you bought. You know your lots. Anything with easement or sewer, that'd be the sewer commissioner. It would have nothing to do with us. So, I don't know.
Okay, no, I'm on it. I'm on it. I'm comfortable with that.
If it's going to go on your property, they're going to have to ask you. All right.
There's a discussion with the commissioner.
Can I just say something? I think that this is a legal matter, and I'm not comfortable to even make a decision on this, because this property was bought defectively. And I would resolve that. I don't even think we should make a decision on it.
I don't think...
Because after the fact, we can't divide it after the fact. She... In my... What she's saying, it sounds to me like she owns the whole thing.
Well, we're not to...
Yeah, but we're not... You see, this is... We're not a civil court.
No, she didn't...
That's what's before us. If she bought it factively or not, this is not our problem.
But it's come to light.
I'm very comfortable.
These... Can I just say? These are now facts that are... Have been presented to the board. And in good conscience, we do have that right to make that... I'm just saying that. This is... We...
That's why I asked. She bought... She believed she bought 5446. She didn't believe she bought 10,49... 449.
But legally... Legally...
So, there's no question, she didn't get defrauded.
And I will just share my view that, again, my lawyer, my closing lawyer, was well aware... We were well aware of this split needing to happen, because the first time they went with the presentation to do the split with wherever they had to go, they didn't get it, so they had to go back. So, we did delay the closing before the registry of deeds splitting of this property. And I do know, my lawyer confirmed that that happened. So, I understand your concerns and I respect them, and I'm grateful for it. But I also had those concerns and fought pretty hard.
And to be honest with you, if we don't grant this, it makes it worse for that lady legally. So, and besides what's before us. What's before us, two dwelling, making them two lot. We're not creating a new lot. I think we should give it... It makes it cleaner, so there's no future confusion. She has her deed, he has his deed. She has electric, he has his electric. Separate tax bills and everything. I think that's the way to go. Make it cleaner and easier for the town, for assessors, for everybody. That's my opinion, anyway. Anyone in the audience want to say anything else? Yes, sir. Can I come forward? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. And I agree, the small size of the lot does fit with the neighborhood.
All right, thank you.
My name is Tim Chase, and I live at 5 Camp Street, directly across from the property you're looking at. And I've known Bill Bashant for a while. And what we're trying to do is to get rid of this and replace it with something like this. It won't be as big as this, of course, but that's what we want to do. And as you can see, it's a hazard, not only a wreck, as you said, sir. It's by will alone that it's there. And as far as the sewer lines and things like that go... I'll leave these here if you want to see them. You might have it online. I've looked out at the road there on 11th Street, and they have markings already where the sewer lines could be attached and where the water lines are being attached. I think whoever the building inspector is may have made those markings with a spray can of paint, because it says on it like sewer, and it shows a line on the pavement where they could put it in. I think there was three different locations directly in front of this house. So, I feel very confident that it wouldn't involve my neighbor's house at all. And if you go down there and look at it, you can see where the property line is, because there's a whole row of bushes going right up the property line. And you see two different fence styles. A new one when they built her house and an old dilapidated one with its own entrance leading up to this beautiful structure. So, I would urge you that you approve this, because not only will it benefit our community right around there, but based on the last structure you put in and stuff, it's really improved the neighborhood and increasing our property values. It's getting rid of a big hazard and replacing it with a nice house. So, I urge you to vote yes on this.
I have a question before you...
Yeah, go ahead.
You said what we propose to do. Are you a participant in this?
No, no, I'm just a neighbor. And...
What they proposed to do.
What they proposed to do.
Okay, I didn't know. I just... It's... I'm not playing semantics with you. I use the "we" word a lot of the time, but...
I have a beautiful view of that property out my window.
I didn't want... I just didn't... You know, I just... I wanted clarity, that's all. I didn't... Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who else would like to add anything? You're aware of an 81L exemption?
The... Yeah.
Can you explain it more?
His letter, what the commissioner's talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's talking about being able to create the new non-conforming parcels. But it can't exacerbate or have a... Why we have to seek the variance from you is from the lot size. So, for some reason, we had a bigger parcel, and we're going to have... We had 20,000 square feet ANR, no problem. But yes, this does rise to the variance level because of the... We're creating a new non-conformity.
Okay.
Can I...
Yeah.
I would like to propose that we bring this back before us after we get some clarification regarding the 5 or 10,000 square feet, and it's a one- or two-family dwelling, and what other residential means. Because I feel like it should be clear whether or not dividing that creates that situation where they could then become two dwellings, each on each lot. The other thing I want to say is that it's almost like the fact that this has been done, it's like our... It was done ahead of time before this board made any decision and...
It was done wrong, to be honest with you, but that's not our problem. It was done wrong. I don't know how that lawyer closes.
I personally think that I would like to hear from the commissioner to clarify whether or not those then could in turn have two dwellings on each lot if we were to grant...
It won't, I'm telling you, it won't. I'm looking at it, it won't. There's no way.
I mean, one... At least one more.
I understand your point, your concern, but I don't think it can happen. I don't.
I'm reading the bylaw, it's clear, so clear.
Mr. Commissioner?
Yes.
Isn't this all online, two weeks ahead of time, that everybody can have a chance to go look and any questions that we bring up?
Right, but things are... I understand what Veronica says. Things arise during the hearing.
But I'm just saying, I mean, is there some way that we can do homework before we get to the meeting? So, you understand completely? And then you can have a chance to ask inside the two weeks, anybody that you need to stop in the building inspector and talk to him?
Well, I would say...
That way, we could clarify it and have it all clarified before we come in to these people that are waiting time and spending money on this...
Rick, you've said this several times.
No arguing, just keep it civilized.
You've said this several times, and I'm going to say to you, an application has 90 to 100 days for approval. And that's so that these types of things can be clarified when they come up, not so that I can go and research prior to come so I can make an immediate decision when one of these things comes before our board.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Listen, I don't mind. I totally understand to continue. But if you notice in our agenda, how many hearings we have tonight? We had 1, 2, 3, 8, 9, 10, 11. We had 13. If we continue...
None have been continued.
Huh?
I don't... Have we had any continuing tonight?
Well, we don't want them to continue, because we'll end up... In two months, we'll have 100.
Okay, I've had my say, thank you.
I totally understand. If we have every night, two, three hearings, we can afford to continue, continue. And I'm telling you, guarantee, that's what I do for a living. You can't... You need 10,000 square feet for two units. They have five. You know, so... And whatever they did, this is their problem. This is what's before us. I think it's a clean... It's a clean shop for everybody. Makes it clean for the assessors, the town, the homeowner, for the lady there. And she can put it to rest. She knows she owns this parcel, he owns this. I think it makes it better for everybody. So, let's move to close, please.
So moved.
I have a second to close?
I second.
Second by Richard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain, motions.
So, I've stared at this plan, and I've stared... And I've even found where this was drawn. And I'm not finding this as odd as I originally... First I did. The plan was drawn, it was recorded at the registry. They weren't... The woman was conveyed her parcel properly, in my opinion. I'm not a lawyer, but in my opinion. And this plan says right on it, "No determination as to compliance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Wareham has been made or is intended by this endorsement." And they're in here looking for the zoning board of appeals to make a determination. And I think it would be crazy for us to create a vacant lot where we could have taxable income off a brand-new structure. I'm okay with, you know... If it seems a little bit funny, well, these guys do this for a living, and they find these things, and they find these things that can be done. And God bless them, because they help the town, if you think about it. It's not like he's doing something terrible in the neighborhood. I don't think we need to wax redundant.
And you know, I think what he did, he went to planning and created an easement line.
And you look at it, you say, hey, this looks a little fishy to me, but you know, um, it really, the more you study it, it's not so bad.
All right, very well.
I make a motion to approve as presented.
We have a motion by Jim Tookpr, to grant, do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, Veronica or Carrie's, thank you. Okay, five, four... All right, Dale Mitchell, seven, John Street. 63-21.
62-21. You guys got some, did I pass things out that we can get back into the folder?
I guess I hung on to two. Learning kid?
Yeah, but I did do something with the dust and, um, and I need to press on that.
Right, for an A and I. You know what they did, I think they...
There was, there was no hardship on that.
Yeah.
Whatever.
One, one, eight hours given, hold up. Whenever one was.
Now that could go for an A and I.
You need Veronica's signature too.
Veronica, can you write deny next to your signature?
Yes.
Please, thank you.
62-21, is that where we are, we're at? 62.
All right, we are, yeah, 62-21. Thanks, Aaron.
The Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on December 8th, 2021 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 62-21 for a use variance from the requirements of Article 3, Section 330, and Article 14, Section 1471, under the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Robert, excuse me, Robert, to Robert Hammond of 15 Indian Neck Road, Wareham, Mass, seeking to create
Five Indian Neck?
An accessory.
Five Indian Neck.
What did I say?
Fifteen. Five.
Robert Hammond of Five Indian Neck Road, Wareham, Mass, seeking to create an accessory apartment at the subject property located at Five Indian Neck Road, Wareham, Mass. That appears on assessors map 45 lot F-63 in the MR30 zoning district.
All right, name and address for the second, for the racket and tell us what you do.
Robert Hammond, Five Indian Neck Road.
Virginia Hammond, Five Indian Neck Road.
All right, what's your plan?
We have a structure that, the entire structure's around 4,000 square feet. I have an area on the second floor of the rear part of the house. It's roughly a 24 by 44 area. It's open and it's just a subfloor and like a loft. And I want to put a two-bedroom, one-bath unit in there and, uh, rent it out to my brother-in-law.
With a separate kitchen?
Yes.
Okay, you understand you need 45,000 square feet there and 200 for the frontage, which you don't have to do that on the MR30.
I'm fronted on two roads, Indian Neck and Mayflower.
You gotta choose one.
Right, you need 200 feet of frontage, which you don't have, and you need 45,000 square feet for, or you need a variance, if the board wishes to grant a variance.
If you would, I'd appreciate it.
We'll see what the board want to do. Chris?
Say it again?
In the MR30, you need 45,200 feet of frontage. Chris, what do you think? Veronica, while he's thinking.
Uh, I just wanted to look at it just a little bit.
Well, is an accessory apartment a separate apartment? And they're using the term accessory apartment and that seems to have a specific definition.
There will be two points of access and egress.
My, my, I guess my question is, can you rent it to anybody in the world or is it just?
I could.
He can.
That's the intention.
Uh, well, it's right.
It's like a two-family.
Right.
I guess for all intents and purposes.
That's why I'm, I'm just trying to be, you know.
The intent right now is to facilitate my brother-in-law, but...
But if your brother-in-law decides he doesn't want to live there or passes away or whatever the, whatever happens, you're not gonna leave it there?
It has that potential, yes.
You, yeah.
But it would be discretionary in that part. I'm not a big proponent of renting, but...
Uh, Tony, what do you think?
I have rented property before, it's been all right.
I, I have a, I guess I have an issue with it being a residential neighborhood and the potential of probably renting it out to somebody that's not family.
Well, the residential neighborhoods are intent for rental if they qualify.
Right, okay.
This one is, does not qualify, this is the problem. It's nowhere near the frontage nor is the footage and, uh...
It's zoned for multifamily, it's just not...
If you meet the criteria. And it doesn't meet the criteria, so, uh...
It was my, excuse me, it was my understanding when we bought the property from the late Don Bingham that, uh, that the town, um, had him, uh, fulfill the requirements for water and sewer on both roads. Both Indian Neck and Wareham, in the case that they might subdivide.
If, if you can get a variance.
Right, exactly.
Right.
But that was the intent when Don Bingham created the structure. Now he's passed on, we bought the property, the area is sitting vacant, it's the loft of the garage and what is now my music room. But, uh...
I understand, but does not qualify for a duplex. We, we're just creating another house. You know, so, and then the neighbors will come in, then they want another apartment and the other one. And that's why there's rules for, uh, for, for how many, how many square feet you need to create a second unit.
Well, if they had a 24 by 44 area, that would be another thing.
I know.
They don't.
But it, it doesn't matter, it just, zoning matters.
I hear you, what you're saying.
Rich, what do you think?
They also would have their own garage and a separate driveway.
I, I, I understand, I'm sure you do a nice job, but unfortunately it doesn't mean zoning.
I went by and there's an awful lot of building on that property. You've got the big house in front, you've got the new garage in the back with the loft on it. And you're just going through here and looking at size, it says 25% for two-family. That, that is an awful lot of structures, that's gotta be close to 65% of it, isn't it?
Well, it's only the upper, the upper area, the lower areas...
I'm talking about the dwellings, the dwellings themselves. You have your house in the front and then you have the big garage in the back.
Yeah. Well...
And, and how far away from the rear, I didn't, I didn't go around the Mayflower, but how far off of the road are you with your garage on Mayflower?
75 feet.
75 feet?
Um, maybe.
Maybe, yeah. I didn't, it looked like the rear of your property was a little closer than that, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's over 50.
Yeah, it's probably closer to 50, yeah.
It's over that.
So, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm in concern because it's, I think there's a lot of building percentage on that one lot, that's all.
So, so, to that point, Nas, through you.
Go ahead.
Are you putting, are you adding any more?
No.
Buildings?
No, it's, it's all within the same structure.
Buildings exist.
I'm just putting a couple of walls up.
Just, so...
It doesn't all...
I think that's why, I think that's why you're saying it's a use variance instead of, uh, um, anything else, that's...
I'm not adding.
I'm, I'm, I'm understanding, yeah.
You're not increasing?
No, I understand.
A use variance, that's mean you changing the use to two-family, which, that's what, that's why you call it a use variance.
Yeah, well, I, I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm trying to decipher here is, I guess by denying it, how are we, what, what purpose are we serving? We're not... Oh, oh. I get, I get, I guess the density would be the purpose we're serving, the number of people on the property, the number...
It's just my wife and I in the place.
Well, yeah, but you and your wife could go away and a family of 10 could move in, you know, with, you know.
There's only two bedrooms in there.
You know, it's just because you are using, just because you are using it one way, another family could, you, some people hotbed and they sleep, you know, in shifts, so...
Okay, there's, there's a lot of ways to slice and dice it, but...
You know, I know, I know it's not a Navy submarine, but you know, I just, I'm, I'm trying to look at it from all points of...
I used to repair submarines, I understand.
From the point of view that you're not adding any more structure or any more building to the property, I, I don't find it that noxious. From the point of view of how it could be used in the future, you know, I yield to the fellow board members. That's why I'm, you know, trying to...
I appreciate that.
Push the conversation forward.
Jake, what do you think?
Nothing at this time.
All right, uh, I'm going to the public, anyone in the public want to speak in favor of this project? How about against? I hear none. It is strong, personally, I don't speak for the board, I speak for myself. It's a strong argument to grant a variance for this matter. My recommendation to you, you just build it without a kitchen, keep it the way it looks and have your in-law moves in. But we cannot legally grant two units. Now we're creating a second lot. So you could remodel it, put two bedrooms, put bathrooms in it and they could live in it. You don't, you don't need, as long as you don't put a kitchen for it. And put a door in between, that's fine.
Who wants there to be an interior access to?
Oh, there is anyway.
So you guys could share a kitchen, it's...
Well...
And, uh...
You know, that's not...
It's just, it's just a long ways.
Ideal for you, but...
It's a long ways from that area to the...
It's, it's a standard, I am not, I'm not willing to make this practice and make it, make it like standard.
A legal two-family.
And becomes, I'm, I'm not ready to set standards like this myself. I don't know about the board, if they feel like, you don't need my vote to say yes.
If it was a one-bedroom, then?
It, it doesn't matter, it's just creating a second dwelling, you know? And there's, there's a reason why people have bigger land to make two dwellings or two units or duplex or two single families.
That's why it was initially built in the first place.
I wasn't there, so I don't know.
I wasn't either.
But we see what the board says, maybe, maybe they'll, we have, they want to grant it to you. My vote doesn't matter, like I said, I'm one out of five, you need four. Anything you want to add before we close?
I think it's pretty straightforward.
All right. Yes, ma'am, can I, you gotta come, you gotta come forward for the racket, unfortunately, you have, it has to be on racket. And state your name for the racket.
Okay, my name's Darlene Gamash and I butt property up to this gentleman and I was just wondering if the neighbors all agreed, if he had enough votes, could they still do it?
No, it's all up to the board. Whether the whole town agrees or not, it's up to the board.
Okay.
You know, so, I know what they're saying, it's a beautiful building, it's empty, but it's set and standard that I personally am not willing to do.
Again, through you.
Yeah.
I feel as though our chair has offered you somewhat of a compromised position that would probably pass this board this evening and I would suggest you consider the compromised position. And the compromised position is make it additional bedrooms to existing dwelling. Get it built, get the bedrooms there, get the bathroom there. And, who is it, your brother-in-law, your, your brother-in-law would have to eat out of your refrigerator.
Yeah, you could put a fridge and throw a microwave, can't have a kitchen, that's all.
And that's what I was wondering, if it could be just a little, one of those little portable refrigerators in a...
Then you could have a 20-bedroom house.
That'd be a compromised position that would get you
Get you going.
Pass this bill, get him moved in and, and then you could always come back to the board at some future date if you had additional requests.
Okay, maybe boards would be nicer, who knows?
Maybe Nas, maybe Nas would be in a different mood, maybe members of the board would be in a different... But I, I think I've heard, I personally think I've heard a compromised position that it appears to me, and I don't hear any board members saying, no, Jim, you're not speaking for me, it appears to me you'd get a favorable vote if you took that compromised position.
You don't even need a vote. You just go ahead and do it, go get a building permit and do it, don't even need a vote. If you don't put a kitchen, you don't need a vote.
It'd be awfully nice if we had a kitchen.
All right, so let's move to close, please.
So moved.
But it, it, um, if I understand you right, I can go ahead without a kitchen?
Yeah, simple building permit. Well, you need like permit or you bring it to the apartment, bathroom, bedroom.
Yeah.
I don't think that you're on town septic either, are you?
They're on seward.
I mean, you have a septic system, not, so that would be...
They have a septic, no, they have seward there.
No.
Town water, town sewer.
Oh, town sewer, it doesn't say that on the, uh...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. The field card doesn't say that, it says septic.
Yeah.
No, no, town water, town sewer.
Oh, okay, that's gonna be updated.
Yeah, I know the area very well, it's also wood.
Field cards aren't always right.
It's a, it's a castle of the neighborhood.
So, again, earlier you said, did they actually give you two rises, one off one street and one off the other?
Yeah, that's two roads, two, two driveways coming in.
But they're only charging you one septic bill, one source, one...
Well, we're only using one, yeah. But, but the way I understood it, when we bought the property, the town made Don Bingham, who owned the property prior to us, and it expanded it greatly and improved it greatly. The town made him have access to water and sewer on both roads in the case that it was subdivided into condos, let's say. And the Indian Neck Road part was on one water and sewer and the Mayflower Road was on the other water and sewer.
Yeah, but that was back in the 70s, things were different.
Whenever the, whenever that went through, 90s, the late 90s.
I, I just make one further comment and then if in fact they charged you a betterment on both roads and, and two betterments and charged you for two rises and two, two, two and, um, then I think that you would have a good argument in the future. But again, I revert to my prior conversa, comments.
Yeah, I went down, my wife and I went down to the water and sewer people and they said that there's nothing tied in on, on Mayflower.
There's nothing tied in and they're not charging you a second.
Right.
But that they very, very likely did charge you a betterment on every foot on both streets.
Right.
And so, you know, for, for a future argument, nothing to do with tonight, that might be of some benefit to you.
All right, we have a more, I would gotta stop it short because we're getting late. We have a motion to close by Jim, do I have a second?
We closed it.
Oh, we did? Okay, bushes. Any motion?
We would make a motion to grant, um, this application with the condition that it not include a kitchen.
But they don't need us.
Any argument, any discussion on that?
I don't think they need us for that.
Right, we don't need it for this.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
We can...
Can I, can I put cabinets up there and not, and no sink?
No, well, we can't, we can't argue anymore, it's closed, that's signed, you have to work out with the building commissioner. You can't have a kitchen, period.
All right, thank you, Jim.
I don't know what you call, what you put.
Okay.
So we have a motion by Jim, is there a second to it?
What was the, I'm sorry?
The motion to grant without a kitchen. If there's no second, it's dead. Okay, it's dead. Why don't you withdraw without a prejudice, so maybe in the future you could reapply within two years? How's that?
I'm sorry?
Withdraw your application without prejudice because apparently you're gonna get denied. Just for the heck of it, within two years you could come back.
So moved.
Okay, a motion to withdraw without prejudice, I have, can I have that motion?
Yeah, so moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jake, all in favor, say aye? Aye? Oppose, abstain?
Thank you, board, appreciate it.
You could come in after two years, but now you could come after a month, who knows?
You can come in 30 days now.
It's all in slicing and dicing.
If you miss us.
And you can, again, you can go back to the building department and say, look, I still want to build it, I just don't want a kitchen.
Right, you can do that.
And build everything but the kitchen.
Right.
You can put future stuff in the wall.
Yeah.
No, no.
Cause as long as there is no kitchen sink, I'm all right.
We don't know, we don't know what you do.
Thanks a lot.
You're very welcome. 64-21, Scott Green, Valley, 17 Murphy Street.
Uh, did we do Dale Mitchell?
63.
Aren't we on seven, seven John Street, Nas, I think?
Oh, oh, sorry. Cheek, we have four marks, all right, sorry, Dale Mitchell, special permit, John Street. All right, sorry about that. It's just overwhelming.
Uh, 62, 62-21.
We just did 62, I thought.
63.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
62. The Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on December 8th, 2021 at 6:30 PM, room 320, Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition 63-21 for a special permit and/or variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 628, Article 13, Section 1352, under the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Dale Mitchell of 396 South Precinct Street, East Haunted, Mass., proposing to, excuse me, proposing to construct a 15-foot by 18-foot family room addition where the deck currently exists at the subject property located at 7 John Street, Wareham, Mass. That appears on assessors map 50-E-4, lot 528, in the R30 zoning district.
All right, so name and address and let's hear it.
All right, Dale Mitchell, uh, 396 South Precinct Street, East Haunted, Mass.
Here you go, Nas.
Oh, for the last one?
The previous one, yeah.
I didn't know if you were gonna...
Yeah, I do. All right, just let's hear what you're doing.
What I would like to do, I have an existing deck that I would like to enclose, like for a pre-season room. Doesn't expand the footprint at all, cause it's already there. I think I meet the, the setbacks, I'm 12 feet off John Street, 25 off of Cliff Ave and I believe it's 22 off Arnold Road, which is a dirt road or a paper road.
Okay. Let me look quick here. All right, I guess here we have, uh, it's, again, is this an existing, blah, 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 blah. All right, it's an existing non-conforming and again, we have a FAR thing. If the board find that less detrimental, we could act as a special permit. All right, we start by Chris, Chris, what do you have?
So...
What do you think?
I'm just looking at Mr. Queen's, um, letter.
Okay.
And it says in 628, it says a setback of 20 feet. Maintain 20 feet in the front yard, which is the, which is the front yard on this? Is it, um, I don't...
Well, I would like to say Cliff Ave, cause it gives me 25.
And 10 on the sides and the rear, so to me it looks like that's not really, I guess, an issue. No foundation or anything, you're just building right on top of the deck?
Building right on what's there, yes.
Underneath. I don't have any more questions.
Veronica?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Give me.
I need to look a little bit more, I was... John Street, where the heck is this?
Uh, it's down offshore, shore, shore Ave, it's like, you know, this Chow Street and it's about, uh, I don't know, three tons of a mile from... It's Swift's Neck.
Swift's Neck?
Down offshore.
So down to Swift Beach, Bear Left?
Right, basically.
And, and, oh, yeah, 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 I know what this is, okay.
So you adding the deck, right?
Deck exists.
Yeah.
He's got an existing deck, he just wants to build on top, make it a three-seasoned board.
Okay, all right.
He, he wants to make a deck a three-season, um...
All right, okay, so apparently...
Put any heat or anything out there, just electricity.
That's fine if you do that.
You don't use it in the winter.
Anyway, so according to the inspector, the FAR is allowed there 30%. His 31 is an existing non-conforming increase, it's a 38. And like I said, if the board feel it's less detrimental, we can act upon it as a special permit versus a variance. And that's it. All right, so anyone in the public wants to speak in favor against this project? I hear none. Again, Tori, what do you think?
I don't have any issue, it's just enclosing the deck.
Right. Well, you're exactly right, but it just, that's what the rules are, we have to follow. Rich, you good?
Yes, I'm good, sir.
Jake?
Yeah, I'm good as well.
Jimmy?
I'm set.
I'm fine.
Chris?
I'm all set.
All right, let's move to close.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, closed. Motion. Motion.
So I make a motion to grant as proposed, standard conditions.
Okay.
Second that.
Second by Jake.
Do we have to decide if it's a special permit or a variance?
Yes.
Yeah, we do, it's a special, I'm sorry. I make a motion that we grant it as a special permit. There's no one here objecting, does not appear to be detrimental to the neighborhood, or the neighborhood would be here screaming.
Second.
Second by Jake, all in favor to be special permit, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained now, wishes.
And now I propose that we grant.
We have a proposed to grant with standard condition by Jim, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, the carries, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. You gonna walk this around for everybody, is that the, while you're standing there? This is the deck that just became a three-season porch. The guy didn't say his name.
Yeah, I am, one second.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Not a problem. 64, I think, if you're in the room.
Yeah.
If you know that you're number 64.
Yeah, Scott Green, 17 Murphy Street.
We gotta get to it, but I just figured I'd give you a chance to get... I want those seats, I think I already, I didn't... Okay, what the heck did I sign already? Probably.
Yeah, there was one, you guys are gonna build on it.
All right, let's hear it, Jim.
Everybody's turned their copies of this last one in?
I did, no, that's mine.
You got any copies down there that need to get cleared away before I... Okay. I wanna keep Sonia on our good side.
Apple snack.
Do you have some for the rest of us?
What?
My niece, when she was little, she just...
Do you have enough for everybody in the classroom? Is the school teacher at it again, or what?
All right, let's see.
There's a lot of kids chewed a lot of gum from that statement when I was a kid. 'Cause I always was prepared for that question. Here you go.
Jimmy? ABC?
No, it hadn't been chewed or anything. You, um, you looking for a seat on this board or something, or you just like sitting on that side of the room?
Nothing.
She's here more than some of our members.
I tell you what, though, all kidding, all seriousness aside, that side of the room pays better than this side. Need to read this, don't I? The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on December 8th, 2021 at 6:30 PM in Room 320 of the Wayham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition 64-21 for variance from the requirements of Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 15, under the Wayham zoning bylaws, to Scott Green of 9A Melvin Street, Wakefield, Mass., seeking to construct a new, single-family dwelling on a vacant, unbuildable parcel of land located at 17 Murphy Street, East Wayham, Mass. That appears on assessors map 50B, Lot 1-41, in the R-30 zoning district.
All right, name and address and let's hear it.
Attorney Jillian Morton, I'm here for the applicant, Mr. Scott Green, and also the land, the recorded owner, to make a clarification here, is actually, it was in an estate. So Bella Vera is actually Attorney Alan Maderos's grandparents. They both own the property and he is the heir, so it is a land court property, the title's still held under Bella Vera, but Attorney Maderos is actually the owner. So I'd like to spend some time actually going through my memorandum, because I think the facts here are really important to why we're seeking this. So again, I represent Mr. Scott Green, and really, the property has an interesting story, because this is 17 Murphy Street, if you know the area, it's right on the beach there. And while we're here today, we're in R-30 district. It's an iconic area, this property had structures on it, and it's relevant, you know, I heard it said unbuildable, but this lot's been taxed for the whole time as buildable.
Oh, I know where this one.
Yeah, so it's cut through, people try to cut through it right now.
There's a road that goes to the beach right along the side of this lot.
Along the side, correct, that still would stay there. And there actually are some pictures in the back, you can see of what used to be on, so the old cottages.
Foundation's still there.
Yeah, so Exhibit E, you have some nice renderings of what was on there. So that was on there, and that was actually destroyed in Hurricane Bob. Obviously, that was in, you know, quite some time ago, but... But at that point, now, it was, there are facts important, and we actually attached an affidavit from Attorney Maderos, because he, being the grandson of the property owners at the time, could explain of why, you know, you lose this grandfathering, because there wasn't something built there. So the zoning code changed, it went from 10,000 square feet to 30,000 square feet. And we're really looking for some relief here. I think that this area, this would warrant what we're trying to do. There's renderings of the build, which goes along with the unique, those properties down there specifically, there's three or four of them in the past year that have been built up on stilts. Nice, whether it's a summer home or it's a full-time home for these homeowners who have property right on the water. So if we were to get a variance, be able to build, we'd also be seeking a variance for height, because it is exceeding the height there, so we'd be a lot area variance and a height variance. So the height would go up, our max is 35 feet. Our structure that we're looking to build would be 47 feet. And that being because we have to go up on stilts, and it's a two-level, well, two-story dwelling. And there's some renderings in your package of what that would look like, which would go on with the actual nature of the neighborhood and what's happening over there on those waterfront properties. So I think we have a couple of hurdles, but I'm hoping that you'll be able to kind of take a look at that. If we wanna go into the particulars of, again, why it took so long, why we're looking to build now, a lot of that is in that affidavit that's supported the last exhibit that you have here from Attorney Maderos, who's here too, if there's any specific questions. So he talks about that he used the summer there on this property with his grandparents. His grandfather actually got ill and passed away, and then now his grandmother has since passed away. So he's inherited this property and is looking to sell it to my clients, be able to get a nice build over there. There's been some concerns, I know too, probably in your record, there was a letter from Nubatter with some questions. I actually reached out to that Nubatter and spoke to him, he's in Florida. It's a letter from Mr. Hurd, which might not, I don't know if Sonia has in your packet, but I have it, because I wanted to make sure you have all the information. He was concerned about conservation, and I talked to him that we would absolutely be going in front of the conservation board. So that would be handled. He had questions regarding if we wanted a pool underneath, if that would be saltwater underneath the stilts. I said that would be the intention if a pool is built under there. And he had a question regarding the height, and that's really just a taste thing, I think. I think if it's something where you need to walk on the site and then go look at the four or five other builds that are even taller than this proposed build, it'd be something to take a look at. So I'd love to hear the feedback from the board and if there are specific questions regarding the history of the property. Mr. Maderos is here, the developer's here as well, and be able to kind of take a look at it. I think it's the first time, take a look at it, like I said, so it's a couple of issues here.
All right, let me ask you a quick question, any statute limitation, because the foundation's still there?
Per the building commissioner, it wasn't, it didn't allow us grandfather, even with the foundation.
You know, not the grandfather, statute limitation, because it was like destructed by fire or an act of God?
He, I thought it was something like, it's passed, it's passed, 'cause Hurricane Bobba was 1990, 1993, that it was destroyed. So he didn't see that as something, I did try to look into that as well.
Because I could have sworn I saw a case. Case law, I forget what I saw, it was a fire. And the family were able to rebuild it 18 years later, because they couldn't afford it at that time.
Which makes sense. An extreme hardship, right. I mean, this is, you know, a similar situation with elderly owners, and now they're looking to do something with the property.
All right, let's start by Chris, Chris, what do you think? So you need two, you'd need two variances, one for the square footage and one for the height.
Right.
I think the height you asking a lot, but let's see what we have.
And that's something we're willing to look at and see what the board, if, we talked about that.
You're an attorney, sir?
No, this is Scott Green, and Attorney Maderos is back there, so.
Okay. And you don't think there's, counsel, you don't think there's statute limitation on the foundation?
Mr. Chairman, the...
Would you come up and say your name into the microphone, just so that the guy behind the screen doesn't yell at us?
Have a seat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening, Alan Maderos, Fall Winter Street, Taunton, Massachusetts. It is my understanding that the grandfather rule does not apply. We did go through the building permit and conservation process in 1992 and 1993. I believe I did furnish some of those documents to counsel. However, my grandfather did get very ill, and we essentially withdrew everything, because he required 24-hour care for almost 15 years after the hurricane. So we did not pursue it, and then once my grandfather passed, my grandmother was at that time elderly and was not in a position to move forward. Once my grandmother passed and the estate was settled, I listed it for sale, and Mr. Green came forward. That's how we're here tonight.
All right, very well, thank you. Veronica, could I ask you, I'm sorry?
I do think that, you know, being a vacant land and everything, I do see the hardship on that there probably should be a building on there, and I would like to see a house on that, on that piece of property. I do have like kind of an issue with the height, I think that the height is a little bit too high, and I'd like to see it come down. But I do understand they're gonna be building it on stilts, for the flood zone and all that, but that would be my concern.
You could manage to reach 35 feet, you don't need, you'll be okay with the stilts on two stories. Veronica.
I tend to agree with the comments that Mr. Conkley made.
So the part that leaves me foggy is, if I read the building commissioner's interpretation, he's saying, had this never been built on, it would be eligible for grandfathered rights. But it's been built on and demolished, and just because they didn't rebuild in a timely manner, their rights have been relinquished. I personally find that a little bit punitive. Regarding the height, it looks like you're building three stories on top of stilts. It looks to me, with the little bit of plan I saw, that the third story is really the smallest room. It's kind of like, you know, I think if you eliminated that, I'd be, I'd be fine with everything.
All right.
That would get us to 39.
Yeah, I'm okay with this.
Rich?
Yeah, I'm fine, I agree the height's a little much, and other than that, I'm fine with it.
Sorry.
Same.
Before we argue more, let's go to the public. Is there anyone here wants to speak in favor against this project?
Come up and state your name, ma'am.
One other time.
You wanna read the letter in, or you just want it in the folder?
No, it just gives you to have it in the folder, I'll say basically the same thing. My name is Margaret Arseneau. I have the property at 20 Murphy Street in Wayham. My permanent address is 2 Moore Ave in Worcester, Mass. 01602.
Where's 20 Murphy, is it across the street?
Right across the street from that lot.
The gray house.
The gray house on stilts, correct.
Are you, are you beachfront?
Yep.
Okay, so you're across the street, but it's not blocking your view?
No, no, not on that, not on the front.
It's blocking your view to the west.
To the left, to the west, correct.
But it's not blocking your view?
And because of the size of it, I mean, I don't have any problem with building on the lot, it would probably, you know, improve the neighborhood and all that, that's fine. But the size of the build, which is gonna like eat up the whole lot, and it's gonna be like a five, 47 feet is like a five-story building over there to the left of my property, which will throw a lot of shade, you know, on the beach, on the properties and everything, because it's where all the sun sets and everything. So I feel that the size is an issue, because it's an unbuildable lot, it's got 20,500 and something square feet, and the size of the house is what, what's the, it's huge.
30.
So you have concern of the height of the width or the width?
I think both of them, I'm concerned with both of them, the size of the house itself, definitely the height, absolutely the height. And I think that the house is, it's like five bedrooms, 30-something, you know, square feet, it's enormous. It is not, most of the houses in the area are not that big. There's a lot of them that are older and are grandfathered. Mine is not, mine was up on stilts in 1991, when Bob came through and destroyed it. So destroyed that property. Mine was the first one that was up on stilts in the neighborhood. My father-in-law, ex-father-in-law, built that, and he's deceased now. Now I own the property. But yes, I'm concerned with the size, you know, of the house itself, that eats up a lot of the lot, and definitely the height.
She's an honest woman, size matters.
It does.
I will say through the chair, we do meet that building coverage, we're at 16.
It looks to me like if they do two stories, it's about 2,500 square feet, that's all it is. It seems big, if they do three stories, it's more. But apparently the board is not leaning to give 47 feet height.
Yeah, I'm definitely not thrilled with 47 feet, that's like a five-story building.
Lock coverage, it's way under, they allowed, I mean, they allowed 25% there, right?
25%. You can have the 16.
Yeah, and that's 16.
Pass it through and we'll get it in your folder, ma'am.
Anyway, so you have concern about the height?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Elliot Aikenholz, I own 54 Watanco Avenue, which is behind Meg on the main street. And I'm not, I don't object to something being built there, I think it would add value to the area and to all the properties, especially right on the beach there. So I'm not objecting to something being built. However, there are a lot of owners that are grandfathered that have small lots. I pay extra property taxes for the right of view of the ocean from where I am. And if you build a big house, it's very high, you're gonna be blocking a lot of people in the community that didn't come tonight, that may lose their right of view of the ocean there, and that should be something the board should consider. Additionally, a few years back, there's the Vendetti property and the Padula property, there was a vacant lot there, which did not meet the variance because of the hurricane, they never rebuilt. That lot didn't meet... That lot didn't meet the thirty thousand square feet they applied to build a big house, and that was turned down by the town, and the Padulas ended up buying that property back, and it's a non-buildable lot. So, be aware, there is precedence here where there's been other lots that had to meet that thirty thousand requirement, that variances weren't granted, and nothing was built because they didn't meet the grandfather clause. And that's a lot, about three lots down, right on, on the beachfront there. So, you should consider prior history in making the decision. But as a homeowner, I've met this gentleman. I think a house would be a benefit. A lot of people do cut through. I think there are other houses that are going up that are not forty-seven feet high, the other, Scott, I don't know how tall your house is, but I don't think thirty-five. So, I would also recommend that you keep it to that thirty-five limit. There's nothing that is higher than thirty-five feet in that area as of right now that I know of. Thank you.
I have a question for the person. Do you know for a fact that when that lot that you're mentioning was denied, did they appeal the decision, or did they apply for a building permit?
It went to court, and it was, it was turned down, and all the neighbors turned out, and it was a height and right of view.
It was granted, it was granted, it was the Sarah Lucis, Paula and John Sarahucci, he bought it. But you got to keep in mind, those couple bought that land for like ten thousand dollars from the gentleman next door and went to build on it, supposedly to put a tent for the summer, and then they wanted to build on it, and of course, sell it for a lot of money.
All I know, all the neighbors turned out and were upset about right of view, and there's no difference to this, there are other neighbors that are gonna, may lose.
It did, it went down in court, not because of the view, because it needed a variance. That's why it was lost.
Okay.
And, but there's a quite difference in the situation. These people bought it for ten grand, wanted to sell it for half a million. These gentlemen, I mean, you heard the story, the grandfather owner gets sick fifteen years, the grandmother, and they know this property very well, and they've been paying taxes on it, like almost a million-dollar value.
I just, I just want the board to take all the facts and understand what's gone in the neighborhood, and
No, we appreciate it.
And I don't disagree with, as I stated publicly, I don't disagree with a home being built there, but it should conform within the area and...
I definitely do not agree with the height personally, so. I do have understanding for the ownership chain, how the mother, the grandfather, the grandmother, everybody, but the height, I definitely not in favor of it.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have another comment.
Yeah.
And I just, again, I might be splitting hairs here, but I think it's important that we clarify, the word, the term right of view has been used multiple times in this conversation, and I don't think anybody owns a right of view in that neighborhood. So, I want to, I want to make that clear. Things might have been denied for setbacks, for lots of things, but just for anybody listening, in my experience, and as attorneys present, they can argue with me, in order to have a right of view, your deed has to contain that right of view, and the view that you're crossing, those deeds have to contain view easements, and if that doesn't exist, there is no such thing as a right of view. The view can be considered by this board, but the word right, I just want to be clear, there is no, the word right is wrong.
All right. Anyone else would like to speak against?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one comment to make for the applicant. I think I heard you mention that you said that beach access would not be taken away. That's still...
That's right. So, if you look on that plan, there's the kind of a pathway that goes on the side of the property.
Yeah.
I know that was one of the concerns of an opposition. And then, people have been using this cut through, through this lot. I mean, we have an email, which is in support of the project, that, you know, people are partying on this lot, it's...
I walked, I went to the site a couple days ago, and I walked along, yeah, I walked along the beach.
Let her speak, and then you can speak.
Okay.
Let her finish. Go ahead, ma'am.
Yeah, so, the pathway, the access, would not be infringed upon, but this cut through that it seems like people are really trespassing on the property would obviously, there'd be a house there, so.
I don't think there's a cut through. I think Murphy Street goes all the way to the beach.
Well, yeah, what I'm talking, we walked through a little bit, there's a path that I think people go, go to. Right.
I used to go there when I was a little kid.
Yep, yep. I have no experience about that.
Do you want to say something?
I just mentioned that because I had this, somebody also called me today about that beach access, because there was another one in the area that was taken away, so they were really concerned about that. And they mentioned that in their deed, I didn't, I didn't see this with my own eyes, but they told me that it states that that beach access will always have to be there, but obviously you're not taking it away, so it's not an issue.
Yeah.
Well, he doesn't own it to take it away. They don't own that beach. I know someone else sitting in that room owns it. They don't own it.
Right.
There's been, I think for years and years, there's been a half dozen little dinghies dumped on this property, properly or improperly, but that doesn't give them a right.
Yeah, but that's not their...
There's no adverse possession for keeping a boat on somebody else's property.
Yeah, it's on the beach, beach line.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I make, those dinghies were there when I was a boy. They were there before my grandfather brought the property, and it was all the neighbors that we knew. So, we never raised an issue about those boats being kept at that end of the beach.
But this is not, that, your land anyway.
We've nev, and there's never been, there's never been a dispute as to that.
Yep.
Right. And then, and just to mention, whoever owns that land, it's a land court, you can't take it by adverse possession.
Correct.
So, whoever owns that land can tell everybody, move your dinghy.
But it's not us.
They want it, and that's not you. All right. Anyone else? I hear none.
Mr. Chairman, I may.
Yeah.
I think that we would like to have a continuance, be able to work with our architect to get you something that, it sounds like the board would want something lower.
Right.
So, we'd ask to go on to the next hearing in January.
All right. Is the board okay with continuing? And, I mean, how does the board feel if they go down to thirty-five feet, so we don't harass these people back and forth for nothing?
Yep.
How's it look, look good with it?
Think if he comes back.
They want to move, let's move it.
No, we'll see the againist first, Veronica.
Huh? What did you say? I can hear you.
The againist, only kidding.
The naysayers, he's asking the naysayers what they have to say.
They want to go and come up with new plans with confirmed height. It sounds good?
Yes, I'd like to have it continued. I'd like to see what they propose.
Everybody's good with that?
We're all good.
Let's move to...
Make a motion to continue till, what is that, January what?
Twelve.
January twelfth.
Twelve, okay.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose abstain. For who's in this room for this matter, you won't be getting another notice, so you have to come back on your own. You won't be notified in the mail, okay? So, we'll see you on January twelfth. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Let's bring back all these plans, please.
Let's bring all the packets, yeah, thank you.
Oh, so nice and neat. I have a straggler here that I think...
You have a straggler?
I have a straggler map.
Straggler map?
Yep.
Extra, oh, yeah, yeah, I threw one over. There was, there was more maps than the, I didn't realize that the maps were included, so I was drawing one over, so you'd have one to share, but, okay. Everybody's turned their packets back? Thank you. We're going to number sixty-five?
Sixty-five. I have conflict with this, so I'm going to sit in the, sit in the back, and Chris will be sitting on that one. All right, so sixty-five dash twenty-one, 108 High Street Realty Trust, a variant seven A and seven B Church Ave. All right. See you guys. Go take a little nap.
Well, are you recusing, you're not even going to, you're still allowed to speak your mind?
No. I own this guy, I'm not owning it.
Okay, okay, so you're totally recusing yourself. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on December eighth, 2021, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition sixty-five twenty-one for a variance from the requirements of Article Six under the Wareham zoning bylaws to 108 High Street Realty Trust, Cara Brian Grady, GAF Engineering, Inc. of 266 Main Street, Wareham, Mass., requesting to divide one lot into two non-conforming lots located at seven A and seven B Church Avenue, Wareham, Mass. Assessors Map Forty-seven, Lot 1023B and Lot 1023C in the Wareham Village Two Zoning District. So, we're sitting on this will be myself, Veronica, Jacob, Richard, and I believe, did he say Christopher? Did he say you? Yeah, okay.
So, I think, one, two, three, four, five, I think I'm going to recuse myself on this.
You want to recuse yourself as well?
Yes.
Well, guess what, Troy?
You're in.
You're in.
Right.
How's that for a fresh night in, huh?
Sounds good.
Okay.
So, so, not, not to be picking on anybody, but if you recuse yourself, I do believe that we learned that you should remove yourself from the room.
Oh, okay.
She's, she's asking to be recused, so you...
I'm not, I'm not nitpicking, I just...
Leave the room, but I...
No, I think not, what the chairman had said is that if I don't have direct interest in it, I don't have to remove myself, it's only if there's a direct interest. I just have a relation...
I just thought that, I understood that if you recuse yourself from what I learned last night, that just for the benefit of everybody and of rights, of confidence that you should, were to remove yourself, that's all I'm saying.
Just go from, go, yeah.
Because you, you could, you could, you could go like this, and this could be a sign, so I'm just saying, that's all I learned.
Right, but if there's no interest, she has no interest, I don't know why she recuses herself anyway, but if there's no...
You feel more comfortable in recused?
Well, I will, just, just to let the board know and the public, I had sat on a, a project that came...
You're obligated to tell why.
No, well, I, well...
Okay, you're willing, okay.
I'm just, it's, it's fine for me, I'm just going to say it because previously, I had sat on a project where there were not as many board members, and now that there's a choice to recuse myself, because the public may not know this, but the chairman is my ex-husband, we have adult children together, so sometimes people can see that as a conflict of interest. So, I'll just, if I have the option to recuse myself, so that someone else can...
Then get out.
I'm leaving.
Thank you, Veronica.
All that talk from us.
Okay, so, one, two, three, four, five, we have a full board.
All right.
And these are the only five that can act on this matter.
Yes, sir.
You know, the, you know, the Murphy Bed War and all that stuff?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I've read it in, I believe, you'd probably like your turn to speak.
Certainly. Brian Grady with GAF Engineering here, representing the applicant. Given the late hour and the number of hearings you've had, I'll summarize this as quickly and concisely as I can, and we can follow that up with any questions. There are currently two homes under construction at this property. It's located in the Wareham Village Two District, which allows for a duplex or two families to be constructed on a lot of fifteen thousand square feet. This lot is considered one lot at the assessors' office because they were originally created in sixty-two as two lots. Zoning has changed to require a minimum of fifteen thousand square feet, so they merged to conform to zoning. But the lot lines still exist, and there's an A and R plan that has recently been recorded. So, the project, as it's currently being constructed today, is fully conforming with all the zoning bylaws. What relief we're seeking is to divide this back into two lots, but they would become non-conforming lots. So, similar to some discussions you had earlier in the evening, so, we don't end up with a new home, we don't end up with a new structure, we have that. So, what it ends up being is basically a form of ownership. Single-family ownership versus a condominium ownership and association having to be established. So, in all other aspects, the project complies with zoning. We're here seeking relief from Article Six, the dimensional requirement for lot area. And going to Ms. Debonese's comment earlier, this couldn't be turned into a duplex, because we don't have the lot area. It's a non-conforming lot, so you only get the single-family home.
So, just, just, just because I've got one, one gray area in my mind, I know there's two structures being built, I think they're already up, roofs on, shingles on, windows in.
Right, yes.
Weather tight. Lot 1023C and Lot 1023B, are those each a single-family home?
Yes.
So, they're two single-family homes? It's not, it's not two, two families?
They're two single-family homes, correct.
Okay, that's...
And that's all they can be.
That's all, that's all they are, and that's all they ever will be?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but...
No, I mean, that's my quick synopsis, I think, with some of the prior discussions you've had this evening, you understand the ins and outs of the request, but if I could respond, any questions or comments?
Troy, normally, I'd go to the left and start with you, just to be contrary, but because, because you're totally green, I won't put you on the spot like that.
Okay.
You can be second.
I can be second, perfect.
Chris, you can be first.
I'm always first.
Well, that's why, you want, you want to be, you want to be, you want to be third?
That's okay.
Go ahead, Richard.
I'm good right now, I'm all set, thanks.
Jacob?
I understand the project, I'm okay with it.
Questions, okay, so you're not, you've been moved from second to third.
To third. I'm pretty, I'm okay with the project.
Hey, Mr. Fourth.
Okay.
You're good?
I do have one question.
Yep.
These were, these were two, two lots, you said, and they were joined because of the square footage, or were they joined because they were owned by the same person, and there was a merger, the...
Well, it was originally, the lots were religion, originally created in sixty-two. Subsequent to that, the zoning in the town changed to require fifteen thousand square feet. So, the lots were commonly owned, so they, they merged to meet the requirements of zoning. The lot lines still exist, but they merged to meet the fifteen thousand square foot requirement. So, in this zoning district, you can build two principal dwellings on one lot. So, this is one lot for zoning purposes, but that would require condominium form of ownership. So, what we're looking to do is kind of bring it back to that original two lots, divide them to get them into separate ownership. So, the relief request, we're requesting is from Article Six for area.
So, you're allowed by right to build the two buildings, or did you have to come for a variance for that?
It's all as of right, as it's currently under construction.
They're there, they exist, they're there by right, and, and the two lots exist, which is, which I found completely confusing for the longest time. It finally got cleared up to me. You know, they, they say you will combine and continue to combine until you conform, and that's all great, but the lots continue to exist until somebody draws them otherwise. That's why the lot, so, you know, which, like I said, for, for years, I couldn't understand, well, if they're combined, why are they two lots? And people all over town get the, you know, they get even separate tax bills, but they're told they're a single lot. But until some engineer goes and draws them as one and submits it for approval, they remain that way. So, they've, these have never been redrawn, even though they would technically be combined, and what he's saying right now is we don't even need to redraw them, we just need to say, yeah, separate them. Did I?
Yeah, that's it, the, the lot lines still exist, but the lots are joined, so everything under construction right now is as of right, we're just, your decision would basically just change the form of ownership for this, for the structures.
The two lot, the two houses on one common lot, and they have.
They would have exclusive use areas.
They both have their own lot, they'd have, they could put a fence down the middle, and one guy could mow the lawn, and the other guy doesn't have to. I get it, I'm, I'm, I'm good, I just, I just want Chris to be clear.
I'm good, I just wanna hear the public maybe?
Okay, let's, we're turning to the public, is there anybody here tonight that's in, in front of us on this matter?
I just have one question.
Sure, come on up, state your name, address, blood type.
Blood type, no, I'm sure. Eric Rosenjer, one thirteen High Street, directly across the street.
Okay, so the, right behind you is the high school?
No, I'm the other way, behind me is.
Oh, you're on High Street, I'm sorry.
I'm on, I'm on High Street.
Okay, I got you.
So, the separation wouldn't carry all the way through up past the original dentist office, would it?
No.
No.
Wouldn't affect that, no.
That was my only concern, was all of a sudden it would come up and you'd be putting another one of those houses up next to that, cause it looks like it's getting cleared out through there now.
The dentist office is gonna, that lot is gonna stay just the way it is, I, I had the same question.
My whole input is, is, you know, we bought in there cause of the beauty of High Street and, and a lot of the original houses, and not that it's, you know, not appealing, but it's a very spec house that would be being brought up on the High Street, so that was the only question I had.
The, the density is there because of the existing structure, and then the, the old dental office behind it, pretty sure.
That was the only question, if you see through, it almost looks like you could almost divide it and separate it again.
I got your question, it was, it was an appropriate question, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, here are none, anybody like to make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
And do I have a second on that?
I second.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so the public portion of this hearing has been closed, I'd prefer not to be the guy making the motion, but would somebody please make a motion on this matter?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Troy, okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Passes by unanimous vote. Thank you for your well-detailed presentation, sir, and your patience getting to be here.
Thank you for your consideration and the work that you do on this board, it's thankless.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Long one tonight, isn't it a long one the other, when I wasn't here?
I will.
Yes.
And I, and I don't know, I'll sign as both. I could've just put myself, but I, that way there, they know I, I held both seats, which is the way we voted. Thank you, sir. Hey, you lucky guy, you lucky guy, man, you barely scum through, it was.
Did it pass?
It was a close vote, but you made it.
Where's the knife? Oh, boy.
All right.
Can I have all the folders, the files, the?
Last but not least.
The last one? Oh, the last one.
You guys got anything to turn in down there, thank you, Jake.
All right, sixty-six dash twenty-one, Robert Malone, variance, Blackmore Pond Circle. All right.
We want sixty-six, huh?
Sixty-six dash twenty-one.
Sixty. Sixty-five. Sixty-six twenty-one. I look at the size of this folder.
Porsha, on you.
What have they done to us?
Are you, are you the same one about the relief for Asbilt?
Yeah, we took care of that, sir. That was all done. The very, very last one, we already took care of, the very last one, see the one in yellow? It was wiped out. Yeah, I took care, I took care of that earlier, sir.
If you don't mind me asking, why, why you want the relief from Asbilt?
Originally, when I came here, first of all, my name was Charles Purdy, C. Purdy Construction, I came to the, uh, board a while ago for one forty-two Blackmore Pond Circle, I mean, Blackmore Pond Road, Jacob Allen Lowe, did the addition, did it all, got everything done, which you said we had to do, took the stove out, no problem, and when I went to get the. Yeah, no, that's yours. When I went to get the, um, occupancy permit, they informed me that I didn't really have to have an Asbilt, and when I went to the board, they would let it go, because I was sixty-some-odd or seventy-some-odd feet from the nearest house. So, in the meantime, decided to do it anyways, and I just happened to come up with the Asbilt today, so I brought it to the board earlier, oh, excuse me, earlier, and dropped it in here to clear it, so I don't need your approval, sorry about that, sir.
Did you get your occupancy?
While you were traveling around the world, we took care of this. Yeah, he took.
Did you get your occupancy?
I got it temporary, and tomorrow morning I'll get the permanent one.
All right, good, good for you.
Thank you.
All right.
As you would know. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on December eighth, twenty-twenty-one at six-thirty PM in room three-twenty of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass, oh-two-five-seven-one, to consider petition number sixty-six dash two-one for a variance from the requirements of Article Six, Table six-twenty-eight, under the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Robert C. Malone, trustee of sixty-five Northdale Road, West Roxbury, Mass, proposing to increase the size of a pre-existing single-family dwelling located at seventy-nine Blackmore Pond Circle in West Wareham, Mass, that appears on assessors' map, seventy-six, lot eight, in the R-sixty zoning district.
All right, name and address for the record, and tell us what you don't.
Armando Peraro, Comprehensive Design Bill Services, they have an office in Wareham and one in New Bedford, P.O. Box five-seven-eight, West Wareham. We're here because we're looking to increase and convert this from a, a summer cottage to a all-year-round residence. Existing, there are two small bedrooms and a very small bathroom on the existing house, the house sits, and if you look at the site plan, the engineer actually called out fourteen foot five from the edge of the house to the, um, the property line, from the built-out portion or the bump out where the entrance is, is actually nine feet, by the time we do the addition, we stick all the way out, away from the pond, we are increasing it to nine point five feet, so we're not creating any issue on the side yard. But I'm gonna basically, uh, there's a plan here that, that the board doesn't have, because I ended up doing something so that we can actually show what we're doing for, uh, an added square footage. So, what we're looking to do is to take this area here, build it out a little bit towards the pond area, so we can gain a little bit more for the kitchen area, and then we're looking to be straight with the existing built-out and bump out, and go straight out and go towards the road, so that would be the addition onto the first floor. Right now, there's one bedroom here, one bedroom here, and if anybody owns a boat, that bathroom is about the size of a ga, of a bathroom on a boat, you'd have to go to another room to take a shower. So, what we're looking to do is keep that bedroom there, a decent bathroom here, open up the whole area so that it could be a usable space, we're looking to put the kitchen on the side near the property line. On the second floor, we're gonna do a bedroom, so we're keeping two bedrooms that the house has, we're doing one downstairs, one upstairs, we're doing a nice bathroom upstairs, we're doing a little seating area, we've got a home office and an exercise area, and we've got an outdoor deck that will be right on top of the existing. The house, as it, as it sits today, this is the way it looks, it's one-story, and what we are looking to do, which this is pretty much with what's in the area. We are looking to take the house and basically do two stories, so we're going up. The issue that we have with this lot, we can't really increase it because of the size of the lot. We are at, current, at nineteen-plus percent, this is a twenty-five percent area for the FAR, we're looking to go to thirty-four percent, so we're looking at, asking for a relief of a, of approximately nine, ten percent increase, eleven percent increase. This basically ties in with what's going on in that area. In your packet, you'll find pictures that I've taken of what's going on in the area, so it blends in. So, again, this is a bigger one, and you would have this one as well, this is what I was talking about, this is fourteen point five near the neighbor, this is nine foot between the property line and that existing entrance.
That's existing nine feet.
Right, that's nine feet, exactly, to the existing entrance that's on the side, and when we go out, cause again, we're adding away from the water, we're not, I mean, with a little bit area, thirty-two square feet in that area, we're building away from the water, and that is nine point five feet, so nine foot six, so we're actually a little bit further away from the property line, but we're not really creating any more of a detrimental to the area. So, we have a hardship, it's a tight lot, so setbacks are gonna be tight, and that's why we're choosing to go up. This property has been in the family since the nineteen forties, it was conveyed, um, from the original owners, which was the parents of Mr. Malone, to, uh, Mr. Malone as a trustee, and it stays in the family. Mr. Malone is retiring, or has retired, and he's looking to enjoy the area and use it as a all-year residence. A little bit about myself, I, in nineteen ninety, ninety-one, I bought a piece at, it used to be Whispering Pine, it's now Holly Tree Lane, number two Holly Tree Lane, I've been in the area since that time, I've seen it develop, there used to be a camp there that converted into all-year residences, and this property's on the other side of the camp, so, um, we wouldn't be creating any hardship, but I think you've just given it a lot more value to the neighborhood and to the property.
Right, good, thank you.
And I, I also live on that road myself, up the other end, and, uh, most of the development going on there right now is two-story buildings, they're bringing them all up, they've come here, they've done their, you know, and they're all wanting to go up, making nice homes out of them, and I really believe this would help out the, the family themselves, they can at least live in there rather than going elbow to elbow and eat it comfortable.
So, I guess he will, again, FAR. I wish they changed that bylaw for the FAR, so, it's all FAR, FAR. Anyway, uh, FAR variance, Chris, stop by you.
I'm, I'm all set, actually, so you're gonna, that doesn't have a foundation on it now, right?
Yes, the section we wanna add to has the foundation already there from existing, except we have the new ten-foot section, we'll have to add the, the foundation to it.
So, I'm just gonna touch up on that, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, obviously, this is, this is gonna go to Bill, it is in Bill and the Department, got rejected, so it could come up in front of the board, and as a designer and a licensed construction supervisor, that's something that we definitely have to look at as well. Again, this is a submission, and if this goes through, then we take it to the next level, and we'll have to evaluate everything a little bit more in depth.
I'm all set at this time.
Jim? Back to FAR, and how I feel about that, I'm good.
Tony, what do you think?
I have no questions, I'm good.
Well, I have, the only comment I guess I could make is, um, this is on private septic, and that's a border health matter.
Right. So, so I'll address that right now, obviously, we have to, and I basically advise the client, this is step one, we could go and apply for everything, but I, it's a big investment, if it doesn't go any further, then there's wasted money that will be spent, that at this point, we get this approval, we move on to the other steps.
All right, cool. Rich?
No, nothing at this time.
Jake?
Nothing, you have, I like your mask, so that's cool.
What mask? You don't know how many times I get in trouble for it.
Oh, that's funny.
Anyone in the public wanna speak in favor of this project?
So, well, I'm, I'm up here, since I do, on the other side of the pond, I can't speak in favor because I agree to the process.
Ma'am, wanna come forward? I'll give you the floor to speak after, so, yeah, you raised your hand, right?
Yes.
Name and address.
My name's Caitlin Bradbury, and my house, I live across the street at seventy-four Blackmore Pond Circle, so just wanted to note that I am in favor of this project, and the seventy-nine Blackmore Pond Circle is directly across the, the dirt road from me.
All right, thank you, now you could speak your mind.
So, again, like I said, in nineteen ninety-one, I, I bought that parcel there, it's, uh, on the corner, so I got a big frontage there, and in the years that I've been there, I've seen it slowly built up, and I can go back before ninety-one, when I was in scouting, and I had attended a function at the camp that was there. That whole area is developing, and we're seeing a lot of development, um, and guess what, I'm gonna tell you, I commend you guys for being here, I'm a past member of the ZBA probably about fifteen, twenty years ago, and I know this is very difficult, but when we look at the town, we're looking at a town that was in certain areas between Horseshoe Pond and Blackmore Pond and a few other ponds, that it was a summer community, we're now at the point that, you know, a lot of people are taking it, and it's giving the town that much more value, so I'm in favor of it for the simple reason that it's gonna take a, an area that's gonna give a lot more use to it, and it's definitely more valuable to the family, and it's also more valuable, which I know that they probably won't hear me say this, but it's also more valuable as far as a tax, tax base, so we can reduce our taxes.
All right, good, anyone else wanna speak in favor or against? No, no? Board, any, any input? Any more input? All right, before we close, do you have any more to say before we close? No?
Make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing?
Motion to close by Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jake, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, okay, what's the wishes on a variance?
Make a motion to grant standard conditions.
Have a motion to grant standard conditions by Jim?
I'll second that.
Second by Jake, uh, was that Rich or Jake?
Me.
Uh, Jake, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Stained.
Abstain, so it's four, one, zero, it carries. You're good, thank you.
Four, zero, one, or four, one, zero? Four, one, zero.
Four, zero, one.
Again to the board, I commend you guys for your time spent here, because like you said, that side, you don't get beat that well.
Thank you.
No, thank you. And the, and the thirty, thirty-eight, nineteen's been handled, so we can just cross that out.
This was an early night.
Hey, what was the, what's the decision on sixty-three, twenty-one? Five, zero, zero.
Which was that, what's, what was that one?
Seven John Street, there was five, zero, zero.
Approved.
What's a variance, section seventeen or ten?
Move to adjourn? Second to add a motion, second to add a motion.
Seventeen is the appeal period, or ten is the.
A motion to adjourn, and it's been seconded.
Second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, okay, we adjourn, thank you.